Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 18th work session for the city of Ballard Beach. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the living room.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robinaki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
And Councilmember Rita Swob has not arrived.
Okay, so we have Frank Banker on the phone. Rita Swob in section 1 is not here. Okay, we'll begin the meeting. So item number one is a work session. First, before we start, typically, we're not voting on anything tonight, but we typically do open it up. Do the citizens have anything they wish to comment on during the individual items? So items 1, 2, and 3. Does anybody have any objection to us opening it up? There is no objection, so I'll call for citizen comments. Citizens, just so you know, we may talk about something for five minutes, we may talk about it for a half an hour. At some point, when there's a breaking point, I will come and ask for the citizens to come up. When you do, come right up over here by the podium. Okay, so item number one is discussion of ordinance 21.
We didn't look at the agenda.
We don't have to. It's a work session.
I was gonna, I'd like to actually amend it if that's possible.
I think we can, or you can just bring it out at the end, but go ahead.
This deals with meetings and how we, how we address the council. This is in table, section 2-64. The reason why I'm asking to do this first is because we're about to have a meeting, and I'd like to just get clarification on item C and D, exactly what they mean, and just make sure that we're all aware of what those mean and how they work.
Do you just want to take it out of order, put 2 as 1, 1 as 2?
That would.
Anybody have an objection? It's done. It's a work session, it's not a record agenda, so we can do it as we see fit, so.
Now, this is not the same as item 2. This is actually a different section. This is 2-64, and this is addressing 2-63. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but where do you want to bring it in under?
I would like to move it all the way to number 1 and just slide everything down.
So it's not on the agenda at all?
It's not on the agenda at all.
Okay.
This should go quickly.
Okay, so then we'll call it item A, 2-64.
Yep. Items C and D.
Okay. Anybody have an objection? Again, this isn't a formal agenda, it's a work session, we can do pretty much what we want, but anybody have a problem with that? Okay, so item A then is 2-64. Dave, I'm going to turn right over to you.
Okay, alright.
I can't hear you, though.
I'm sorry about that. Alright, last week, there were some questions that came up after the meeting, and they were from me. Certain member of the audience may have said some comment, and they were referring to a particular council member. They weren't speaking directly to that council member, but they were referring to that council member. For some reason, it was my understanding that we were not, or that was not allowed. So I pulled the code up, and I read it again, and I'm still not one hundred percent sure what it is that I'm reading here. It says, "All remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body, and not to any particular council member." I understand that the citizen was not speaking directly to that council member, but was calling that council member out by name. This is so great of me, because sometimes they're not allowed to mention anyone's name. I've seen many times where they tried to call you out directly and say your name, and you called point of order. But last week, everyone on the council allowed it. So I'm not sure exactly what, what's the correct, what are we supposed to be doing here? It needs to be all one way or the other, and we should agree upon it. Can we address that one first, and then we'll move to D?
Yeah, but just so we're all on the same page, what were we, I mean, there was a lot that went on, so refresh your memory, what was the piece? I think I know what it is, but.
This was, it was, it was called to our attention about Rita Swob and a real estate transaction. So I just wanted to find out, what are we supposed to be doing here in this case?
I'll tell you my guidelines, and that what I followed pretty much religiously from the get-go. If you're speaking a fact, maybe the fact isn't flattering to the person, you let it go, because that's fact. It may not benefit you, but it's a fact. If you go into a person's motives, that's against our rules, that's against Robert's Rules of Order. That one may have crossed the line. The person themselves didn't call it point of order. So like you said, I usually call it point of order. If I find something going against me, you call it point of order. But we had a meeting the last work session, and I said it's everyone's responsibility. Now, if you're not going to call it point of order and you're being attacked, if you don't feel it's an attack, then, I don't feel it's an attack either. You know, I'm not the public defender here, so if you, you know, it's up to you. If somebody comes up, "Dave, this, you know, this is a fact, Dave's this, Dave's wearing a red shirt, I don't like red," "Dave wore the red shirt to make me mad." Wait a minute, now that you shouldn't have said. You don't know why Dave wore the red shirt. "Dave wore the red shirt because that's what he saw in the class." And that, to me, would be a valid point of order, and it would stop it. So that's my guidelines. I think that comports pretty well with Robert's Rules of Order. But if you're speaking factually, I mean, we always speak factually. You are supposed to address the body, but when you address the body, you can be speaking about a person, it's just that you're not supposed to, and this happens sometimes, where people are speaking right to a person. "Dave, if you tell me what you're," that's not supposed to happen. It's really supposed to be, "I'd like to know what council member Gaddis was thinking." You could do that, but nobody should be having a one-on-one conversation. That's the way it is. I mean, we don't get real formal with, everything has to come from me, because literally, if you had a question for Lynn, you'd have to say, "Mr. Chairman," you know, we don't do that. They do that in the House of Representatives, but we don't do that here. We could, if people want to, but I think it's just counterproductive, particularly, you know, during these meetings. But I do try and limit the cross-talking and the direct stuff. But if you have a question for the city manager, just ask it of him. That's the way I do it. I'm open for, you know, if there's anybody wants it changed or anything, but we will be consistent in how we do it. But you gotta fight for yourself if you're, you know, it's not just, yeah, Glenn?
No, I don't buy that argument. You are the presiding officer, and when somebody is addressed, sometimes, literally, you're caught so flat-footed, you're bringing shorts out, and it takes an impartial person to sit back and say, "Wait a second, that's not right, that's not how we apply this stuff." So I would appeal to you to exercise your duties as a presiding officer, whether or not a person who is named takes offense to order or doesn't call it point of order. I believe that falls within your purview as a.
That's not our rule. That's the one we went through last time, and I'll be happy to pull it out, but in addressing the council, I read to you how it's everyone's responsibility to preserve decorum, and I need to see more of that, because I'll tell you, I don't see them. I see people sitting back waiting, you know, I don't mind being heavy sometimes, but I want to have a nice reputation sometimes. So I don't have to sit here and call everyone out if I see it. It was a close call, okay? If some, if a point of order was called, I'm not sure how I ruled on that one. Very well could have said it was well-founded. Not because it's fact that Rita Swob sold the house, that's fine, you could say that, but when you start to say, "Why she did it," hmm, now we're into the wrong territory, so that shouldn't be said. Okay? But anybody can call that, anybody. And I understand you get hit between the eyes, but I get hit between the eyes all the time, and I call it. So you can't be snoozing at the wheel if, you know, if somebody's attacking you, and if you see somebody else being attacked, jumping, you can call it point of order. It actually makes it easier if somebody else calls it and I rule on it, instead of me ruling on my own point of order.
Yeah, I'm kind of a dip. Sometimes it feels great, because I remember when that was said, I was like, "Does that count?" And then I'm in my head, and by the time I had the mental debate whether it was, you know, valid or not, it moved on. So I think we all need to step up and try to defend everybody. And to me, you know, reflecting on myself, maybe I should have said point of order, and if it turned out not to be a valid one, well then, okay, I just stepped back, but at least I tried. And it was valid, and it was made, so I don't think it should all rest on him. I think it should equally rest on all of us, that we need to police it. And kind of if it is great, and I'm not sure, maybe call it out, because sometimes it's better to say something than to be a bystander and let something happen that shouldn't. And I don't think anybody would fault you if you said something out of benevolence and protection, and even if you were wrong at that point, be like, "Okay, well, my intentions were good, I tried, so I'm ready to understand now that that wasn't the right time." So I think we all need to be better about that.
You don't get marked a point against you if you call it point of order and it's not well-founded. It's just, of course, if you know it's not well-founded, sometimes I'll actually say, "No, it's just factual, we're okay." Again, there's a lot of facts that don't benefit certain people, and we want to hear those facts. Every fact isn't going to help the person, because then all this is going to be is a nice session, and that's not what it's designed to be. There's going to be negative facts, but I am going to always support a point of order. If you start to get into a personal attack, you know, your mother wears army boots, well, that's a personal attack, okay? You know, you sold somebody's house and didn't tell people? That's fact, okay? You did it for this reason? Eh, I'm not so sure about that one, I don't think so. So, but call it. If you're in doubt, call it. And if nothing else, a little hint from people who do litigation, sometimes it just breaks the momentum of the person who's just tearing into a person, it just gives a little pause, because then I have to rule on it, and, or I have to call for a ruling, and it takes a break in the action. So you're free to call it. I don't sit up here and say, "Oh, you made a bad point of order." There is no bad ones. If you think it's wrong, say it. But that's kind of the, if you're asking for the way I weigh it, that's the way I weigh it, and I try to be consistent with it. I don't want, a personal attack is when you're, there's no fact to it. You just don't like the person. And maybe you don't like the person, but you can't get up here and attack them because you don't like them. And when we start getting way off the thing, and there's no facts behind it, you know, your mother wears army boots, well, we're not going to have that. I don't know if that helps you, Dave.
Well, I think sometimes, too, the line of demarcation is decorum as well as fact. So I mean, duly noted, you know, obviously, fact trumps it, but I mean, there are times when the tone or the verbiage articulates a non-compliance with the decorum, but that's a point of order as well.
Yes, and I found it here, you know, I'm just refreshing everyone's memory, section 2-66A. "Council members, while the city council is in session, the council members shall preserve order and decorum, and the council member shall not by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or peace of the city council, disturb any council member while speaking, or fail to obey the orders of the city council or the presiding officer." So that's our rules. Yeah, I get the last call, but even I don't have to take the last call, I can submit any one of those to a vote if I want. And if it gets really iffy, I will. I mean, you know, usually it's a pretty clear cut.
Going to a glance at, I agree with you, sometimes it's fact that's how it's in, so I think in those cases, even if it's a point of order, and it's fine, because it's fact, I think it kind of breaks up the field up, and maybe then the person speaking it could just take a mental step back and be like, "Okay, let's stick to the facts and take emotion out of it." So I still think, I mean, I'll try and do better myself, when it's a gray line, just say it, and then you guys can either one tell me I'm wrong and educate me why, and so I know next time, or be, say, "Hey, that's a good point, let's follow that."
Robert's Rules of Order says that you can disagree, or disprove, or object to something in the strongest of means. So you will hear, if you watch any of the legislative sessions, people raise their voices and stuff like that, so to a point, it's okay. I mean, you know, we had some sessions that got a little rough. Your veins don't have to be bulging out of your neck, but you can raise it. And you can't tear into somebody, you can say, "I'm disgusted by your behavior," and that's fine, that's fine, okay? But, you know, let's stick to the facts, and you can show your displeasure with a person, and I'm, that's what we were here for. But the personal attack, you know, "Everything was wonderful till you came along." Well, no, I'm sorry, everything wasn't wonderful, and none of us are the problems individually, okay? So that's a personal attack. If you can prove it, that's fine, you can't prove it. Most people can't prove it. Does that help?
Somewhat. Let's see how it goes going forward. The next is, next topic is D, and this is, this is pretty cut and dry, during the city council meeting. Audience members shall not make or cause to be made any audible or disruptive sound or noise. That's enough about that. I think we all need to, we need to point whoever it is that's doing it out, call it point of order, alter the meeting, and have it stop, because that's happening way too often also. And that's it. So I just wanted to.
Is there any other suggestions? And if, you know, I'm going to say this to the audience, if, for the citizens, because I know that some of the people here are regulars. I keep, I hear it after the meeting. So-and-so was saying such and such. You should have heard what so-and-so was saying. Okay, so-and-so is not supposed to be talking. Okay? So raise your hand, point of information for the chair, address it to me, I'll have you come up here, put it on the record, and I'll tell so-and-so to stop. We had somebody a couple meetings ago that thought it was funny to make constant interruptions with some kind of cellphone or something. Juvenile, just absolutely juvenile, okay? Asked once for it to stop, it didn't stop, asked twice for it to stop, it didn't stop. Fine, tell the sheriff, take the person out, get their device turned off, and then they can come back in. I have the ability to remove a person from here if they're disrupting it. So if you hear somebody in the audience just chattering, doing a running commentary, this is not the NFL, there's no color commentary, you go home and you can talk about whatever you want to talk about, but don't do it while we're here. You're coming out on the tape, you're disrupting other people, but I can't hear what's happening out there. You know, I'm trying to run and watch what's going on here. At any point, we just heard, somebody can call it point of order. I can't say, "Well, what did you say? I wasn't paying attention." I need to know what everybody was saying, what the last comment was. So I try to do that. If there's something going on in the audience, say it, and I will absolutely get to it, I guarantee you. Dave, anything else on that?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. Um, citizens, it's opened up, does anybody have any comments on this one before I close it out? Okay, that one's done. So let's go on, we did not move 1 and 2, so 1 is still, still saying it's number 1. And 1 is discussion of ordinance 21, is this right? ZZ, amending chapter 86 signs? Yeah, actually, we have it assigned in a number, that's why it is correct. Okay. So I asked Fred before the meeting, I said, "Did anything change on the sign ordinance?" And he just took out some of his changes, not his just red line changes and stuff like that, so we're back with the sign ordinance, and we're back with the sign ordinance. So where are we at? Glenn brought some visual props, I see, so.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about 3x5, 2x4, this, that, and the other, so what I did, I took some old court plastic, and some of it I cut up, some of it I did. This is our typical size sign, you know, for most things. This is the typical sign that we see, yard sale.
Campaign sign.
Campaign sign. It's 18 by 24, and that's, that's the size of it. There wasn't a recommendation to do a 2x3, and that's what this, or political signs, and that's what's written to the ordinance right now.
Glenn, can you flip that around? I want to see what the print looks like here.
Oh.
Oh, it's not that much, okay, alright.
So this is a 2x3.
Two foot by three foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two foot by three foot, okay? And then there was talk about 3 foot by 5 foot, which gets, let's see, let me get my stick right there. This is 3, yeah. So that sign, just to give you an example, would be about this big, which I don't think you're going to see a wire kind of sign sticking in the yard this big. So, and then there was some discussion about Realtor signs. This is a typical Realtor sign size. Might be this way, might be that way.
What's the dimensions on that?
Uh, I'm not writing.
Glenn, do me a favor, put that against that, what we call the campaign sign, the first one that you showed that had the yard sale.
Uh, you mean a normal campaign?
Yeah, yeah, the one that we, the little one, the yard sale one, the standard, I call it a campaign sign, okay?
Yeah, so this is a Realtor sign, it can be different directions. I wanted to say it's 24 by 24. And then we went out and got some signs, did some measurements on some signs for contractors, and most of those were in this range, which were about another 300 inches bigger. So, you know, they're pretty, pretty close, but similar to the Realtor sign. So I guess the real question tonight, if you don't have any changes to the ordinance, is sizes of signs and where you're going to put them. The comment with 3x5 sign, I don't think you're going to put that on one of those wire things that one people put. And even a 2x4 to this size is pretty big for that, for a Realtor sign. I mean, you know, unless you're going to put some states to it.
There were some bigger political signs, though, some of the, you know, the bigger candidates or the events had it, so they were about that size.
Yeah, they were mounted probably on some kind of culture sticker or something. Not so much the wire, but, you know, or stronger.
Yeah.
So that's all, I'm, I was trying to give you some visualization, because the sign sizes were everywhere, and, is it the last session? I think that's, was pretty much the only other comments to determine.
There was, and I addressed it with Fred, and thank you for bringing in the visuals, because I think we'll be able to pick something from that tonight. The one question, well, Frank, I think, had brought it up, and he kind of said, you know, "This thing is, this ordinance is too big, it's too long, it's too complicated." And I went back and I took a look at it, and I don't think that the legal part of it you should mess with. I think it's, it's been very well thought out, there's a lot of detail in it, and there are details in it for a reason. But I was speaking with Fred earlier tonight, and I said, "My only suggestion, if we wanted to cut the size of this down, is, there's a, probably the first six or seven pages has like the legislative intent, and typically, you don't put that in your code, in your ordinance itself. That's in the wherewiths, it's in the legislative discussion." You usually have to search for that, and, you know, I wish everybody did put it in the law, but they don't, and usually, when it's the legislature, you gotta go find it, okay? This could be, if we want to try and pare this down a little bit, you probably could take about six pages out of this. The beginning, they were, talks about the legislative intent, some of the key cases and stuff. I think it's all good, but that can be moved into when we actually pass the ordinance, and that's the only place that would show. It wouldn't show up in the ordinance itself. We don't have to lay out our thinking in our ordinance, so that's one thing. The other thing, and I didn't cross-check all of this, but I know I was the one who said, "We need, we never defined sign," and then Fred went back and defined sign, and he defined a lot of different signs. I'm not sure if all of those are applicable for us, so maybe some of them can come out or be somehow limited, and we don't have, we even have illustrations on some of them, which is great, but that's, you don't typically always have that in legislation. So that, I think, is 13 pages of this. If we need to look to chop something, I'm not saying take it out and make it disappear, but maybe that's the area, because I know Frank made the comment that, "Because I can't vote for this." And that would be a shame, because I don't think keeping our existing sign ordinance is going to help us. So I think this is good law, but maybe we just want to pare it down, because it is, it's a long ordinance, but with that said, I'm more concerned with getting it right than having it short and bite-sized. I just don't think you're going to get this bite-sized and get the constitutional protection you're trying to look for. So that's my two cents. I'm fine with it the way it is, I don't care if it's 30 pages. Roden?
I like the visuals, because that helped me, because the political signs, I think the 2x3 is too big. I think the field of garden one is probably more than adequate for a political sign, personally. But the argument was made, like, should a real estate sign be bigger than my political sign? Should the construction be? So I don't know if we want to make two sizes standard, or make one size, that's at first a debate, but I'd like to get it more uniform and keep it easier to enforce. That way, somebody's not like, "Okay, wait a minute, which sign? Okay, it's political, so, okay, let me get my measuring, and just say it's all 2x3 or all 18 by 24, just stick with uniformity."
Well, it could be up to that size, and, you know, so if you want to go with what I call the standard political sign, because that's the most affordable one, if you're buying them, then put that in, and then you've used them in elections over and over again. But you might have the option of going a little bigger. I just think that the minute you start to say that the Realtor has greater rights than the politician, who has lesser rights than the construction guy, why? And I'm going to come at you and say, "Why? I'm running for mayor of the city, and you're telling me some guy who's installing the new bathroom has greater First Amendment rights? That's just not a winning argument." So be consistent, and you can give up to a certain size. Believe me, if you're self-funding your campaign, you're not putting in, you know, 3 foot by 5 foot signs, you know, they're just unaffordable. But pick a size, you know, and it can be a little bit bigger. Realtors have a lot of information sometimes that they're putting on, in telephone numbers, you know, open houses, that and the other thing. So I don't care if it's a little bit bigger, but everybody should be the same size, or up to the same size, and then you make the choice, you know, we have to pick the size that we can live with. I think that's keeping us in the law, right, Fred? If we're consistent from user to user, without discriminating against the different users, unless we have a good reason?
I would do the 2x3 and do it uniformly across all categories.
2x3 is the, that's the bigger size than the campaign sign. Can you hold that one up again, Lynn?
Yeah, that would be this.
That's a nice size sign.
What size is the other one they open up?
Uh, it's 18 by 24.
18 by 24.
I agree with Fred, let's keep it up to 2x3, and then if you, construction company decides to 2x3, and a Realtor decides to do 18 by 24, that's fine, but it's up to 2x3.
I'm agree with that. Keep it simple.
And you go up to it as big, you can make it as small as you want, you just can't go bigger.
I'll agree with it if it appears in our next council meeting to vote on.
Well, Frank Banker is on the other line, so I'm going to ask Frank, I mean, he was the one who said about the size of this, and I haven't heard anybody else say about the size of this thing, so I don't want to bring it in, and then Frank, you know, I want Frank's support on this, too, and if it's, if the only objection is because of the so, the size of the, the length of the ordinance, then if that's something we need to address, then let's address it now, because I don't want to bring it up, and we've been dealing with signs for eight months here. So Frank?
Yeah.
So I gave some options, if it's too long, or can you just live with the fact that it's just a long thing?
You're going in and out.
Oh, I'm talking pretty loud, actually. Can you live with the ordinance the way it's written now, or do you want to, I gave in the beginning some ideas to maybe pare it down by taking the legislative intent, which would be about six pages, the first six pages or so, you could move that into the wherewiths when we're passing the ordinance, and it wouldn't appear in the final code. That would save six pages, Fred could always go back and take a quick look at the definitions of the different signs. If they don't apply to us, he could strike them, but otherwise, I think we've really beaten the verbiage to death here with what's allowed, what's not allowed. But you're the one who voiced the objection, so I just want to see if it's still a concern for you. Is the cone of silence not working here? Frank, he just won publishers' clear in the house. No response. Glenn?
I, the last time, I kind of sided with Frank, so maybe I can fill in the void here. I'm having a hard time figuring out why we're in the swamp here, and I've kind of forgotten. I think Leslie brought it up at one time, you know, what's wrong with the old one. I think what brought this to light was, apparently, at one time, a resident had a concern about the constitutionality of this political sign. Other than that, what has been the issue, where we have to take a sign ordinance that has worked for years and can be kind of brightly understood by a resident, because it's only because it's only a page and a half, and now we have a twenty-five page document with eight pages of definitions. And yet, we have only a half a page of exemptions, which is where the wicket's gonna get really sticky there, because somebody's gonna go into those very vague exceptions and say, aha, well, there's my exception right there. And yet, we've got eight pages of definitions in a twenty-five page document. But again, I think the resident's gonna find a loophole in the exemptions there. I, I, I'm just not sure I understand why we're going through this drill anymore. I think, I think I've summarized Frank's.
Okay, I mean, I, I do remember why, and I think you do too, and I'll refresh your memory on it. I mean, we actually had a resident on your street hang banners off his roof that were so big, they actually were the size of this roof. You could see them probably from Clearwater if you were voting. And he basically threatened us, and said, go ahead, tell me to take it down. That's what he told me, and I told Lynn, I don't enforce that. And then we had Mr. Alphandulos have his sign pulled from his front yard by our city manager, which were political signs. Turns out, Mr. Alphandulos was an attorney for a major, I think, Michigan law firm, and said, you know, I could sue you right now. And he said, but I'm gonna use this as a learning experience. And we suspended the enforcement of our sign ordinance, because there were various issues with it, most of them constitutional. I mean, here, here's a good example. The, the construction guy has more signage rights than a politician. I'm not saying it's gonna be challenged, but if it is challenged, I don't think you're gonna win. Now, how expensive a learning experience that's going to be? It could be very expensive. You can't bulletproof it, you could always get challenged, but if you know your ordinance is wrong, we didn't pass this sign ordinance, this was passed by prior councils with prior legal direction. But we've got something now that, hey, two by three is your size. I don't care if you're construction, I don't care if you're running for sheriff, I don't care if you're running for council member, mayor, that's your son. Do what we want with it. And now, nobody can come back and say, well, you're favoring so-and-so construction, I advise the construction guy, he has more rights than me. And that's a valid question. That's why we're, we're at. And that was the attempt to try and fix this before we got into a problem. Had Mr. Alphandulos pushed that issue, that would have been a federal lawsuit, and it could have gotten very expensive. I don't want this city manager or any other city employee pulling up people's signs unless there's darn good reason, and it sticks constitutional-wise. I doubt, that's me saying it, if Mayor asks your city attorney, I doubt that he's gonna tell you that's okay. That's my theory.
So I, the way I read it is, the portion that deals with political signs still has the same caveat as the existing one, which basically says, hey, we're not, we're not arguing with your political ideology. We're just saying that it doesn't conform with the, uh, the city's standard for ambiance or whatever. That's all remaining.
We had rules that said forty-five days before a campaign. I remember this one distinctly. I remember some people running going, oh, do you count the weekends? And, and they were all worried that they were gonna put their sign out one day too early. Meanwhile, we have people in this town, just go around the corner from you, have Trump twenty twenty-four. Hey, I hope Trump twenty twenty-four is a reality, but right now, Mr. Trump is not a declared candidate, and there is no forty-five day rule within twenty twenty-four, we're two years away. And yet, people have political signs out there. So we either have a forty-five day rule for everybody, including president and council members, and you name it, or we don't. Problem is, now we've got that rule for council members, but other guys are sticking in their Trump signs, or Biden signs, or Communist Party signs, or whatever they wanna stick in, and they're like, go ahead, do something about it. It's a trap? I don't know. I know the one on your block was a trap. God was just hoping that we were gonna take action, and we were smart enough not to bite. But had we bitten? I don't know. This guy right in the corner by you, he said, Trump sign forever. That's good, I'm glad he does, but doesn't comply, it doesn't comport with our stuff. I don't see code pulling it up. I don't see Lynn Rees going, pulling his sign out. Lynn Rees wouldn't dare pull that guy's sign out. That guy will sue you as fast as he's looking at you. He will. Patty, hang on a second.
Frank disconnected, do you want me to get him back?
Uh, yeah, let's just pause a second. We're disconnected Frank Bankard at six thirty-three. He went to dinner.
Call has been forwarded to an automated voice message system to pick.
Patty, if he calls in, just raise your hand and I'll stop it, and we'll get him back in, okay? So Frank Bankard is out at six thirty-three. Technical difficulties. I think I just said what I was gonna say, for example.
Well, I'm thinking that the old, the old ordinance or ruling was more vague and more subject to interpretation, more gray. So to me, this just kind of clarifies things, and I, I mean, I'm obviously in medicine, so everything's a little more black white there. But in law, I, my understanding is there's no bulletproof, there's always somebody who's gonna find something. But I think this at least tightens up a little bit and protects us more. I think Fred has done a great job putting a lot of work into it. Is it long and lengthy? But hey, I mean, it answers a lot of questions. And yes, in reality, one page is easier to read through and understand, but it also leaves a lot of stuff out that could be open to interpretation. I think this, the more detailed it is, the less you can interpret your way and just read it, and this is what it is. So I'm, I'm for this.
One thing I, I would like to clarify, though, is we keep throwing out this expression, this is gonna be very costly for the city. So, I mean, even if that one case with the political sign had gone to litigation, is the city of Beller Beach on the hook? Or are we covered by Florida State's insurance policy?
You are, but, I mean, I'm covered by auto policy, but my state farm agent's gonna drop me tomorrow if I go down the block and hit every car just for the hell of it. You know, I mean, there's a limit, I would think. And then there's an experience rating, which probably goes into our, how much we pay each year. So yes, we have insurance, but, you know, I've got fire insurance on my house, but I don't play with gasoline in the living room. So, to me, this was an attempt to take care of the glaring errors. Can a good constitutional attorney try and poke holes in it? Even a bad one can, okay? It doesn't guarantee you that you're going to not get sued. But with something like this, I just think we've kind of closed off a lot of the escape routes and the obvious stuff, where people can come and say, this isn't good. You can go back to the old one, but the old one, I'm telling you, as far as I'm concerned, has a ton of problems. I'll hear from the city attorney if he thinks it's good, but if it's good, then we'll stick with what we got. I don't think it's good, it wasn't good, and that's why we suspended it. And we've been kinda suspending it for a year now, so I think it's time to, you know, kinda get back into some kind of ordinance, I mean.
Well, and it's been suspended for a year, and nothing's flipped on the radar. So I guess that's, that's my point. I mean, the other one stood the test of time, and it's been around for decades. And, uh, we had one blip, and it was dealt with at a tactical level by the city manager, and it went away. So I guess that's my point.
But if you let one person get away with it because they're loud and holy, but then the other person is law-abiding, can't get away with it, that's not uniform, that's not fair. So what you're saying is, right now, I can put a big sign as big as I want in front of my house, which faces yours, and put, Glenn is stinking, or whatever, anything, and it's okay right now, because we don't have anything enforced. So I think we need to have something that we don't suspend in order to prevent mean neighbors, which I would never do that, from doing that, or harsh political statements, or attacks or something. We just need to be able to protect the city. There's always gonna be that one little thing that's gonna sneak in, but that's gonna happen regardless of the old one being suspended for a year or not. So we can't, we can't protect against those little tiny things, but I think against the vast majority, this covers it.
Glenn, I think, do you, what you're saying, we haven't had anything in a year? We won't, because like, eighty percent of this town doesn't even pay attention to what we're doing here. You know, there's a handful of people that follow it, and they're up on it, they know the code. They, a bunch of people will never put a sign in their yard for anything and any reason, they don't even wanna put a house number on their house. So, you know, they don't care, okay? But it's that one that does, the one that's gonna put that big sign away. You know, like Robin said, if some obnoxious sayings directed at your house, you gotta look at it. Now, we're so worried in this town that we have ordinances that say you can't put a bicycle in your front yard more than twenty-four hours, and you can't put a beach chair in your yard more than twenty-four hours. Then we're gonna ask someone to put a sign, and I don't care if it's for my candidate. Next time, it won't be for my candidate, it'll be for somebody else. You put a sign the size of your roof, and then you put two of them, or you put three of them, that's trashy. And I don't care if it's my guy. I mean, there's a point, you know, put that little, what Lynn just showed us, the two by three, put it in your front yard, and you can have it there twenty-four seven. You do have the right to stick a sign in your front yard. You could even put a sign in your front yard that says, Beller Beach is wonderful, Beller Beach stinks, whatever you wanna put in. But.
Or Trump twenty twenty-four?
Absolutely. I don't see why you can't put that in, but, but a banner the size of your house? I mean, you know, you wouldn't like it if it was facing your house, I bet, you know? I mean, and it doesn't have to say Trump, it could say a lot of other things, a lot worse. I mean, there's a city in Jersey that I would tell them not to do it if I were their city attorney, but they, there's somebody with, you know, using, dropping F-bombs and it says F-Biden. And he's got a whole yard full of these things, and they're fining him on the code, and they're gonna wind up in a federal lawsuit, and they're fighting it out right now, but, you know, you could put that in your front yard, but we're gonna give you one. We're not gonna give you a twenty by, I don't know how big that roof was, but twenty foot by, maybe, maybe bigger. That was a big banner. Those are banners they put up at the, at the rallies. That's what this was for. If, look, the coun, if the council doesn't wanna do it, then we don't have to do it. There was a lot of effort put into this. I helped Fred with some of this, Fred did a lot of research on this based on our input. We kinda hashed it out, so I think you've got a better one. If the council doesn't feel that, we can turn it down and go back to what we've got and start enforcing it, and see where the chips fall. I mean, that's the decision the council makes. We wanna move this, I, I guess the key here is to move this forward, because we have a sign ordinance, so if I can frame this thing. We need to move this potential change forward. You can vote against it when it comes up, right? But we gotta get out of, as they say, get out of committee, because it's been in committee forever. So, is it good enough to get, for those who are supportive of this thing, is it good enough to get out of committee? I wish Frank was on the line, because I know he had expressed an issue about the length, but I don't wanna make any more effort, make any more changes unless, you know, if, if, I don't have a problem with the length, you know, but I'm an attorney, I read these long things all the time. So Robin doesn't have a problem, Leslie, I think, was okay, I mean, she's an attorney too. You know, the attorneys don't have a problem with it, but that's, we're used to reading pages and pages of stuff sometimes, so.
I've got one question, and I'm looking at page eighteen, Article Three Standards, Section eighty-six sixty-one. Flashing activated signs shall be prohibited, and yet I go back to the definitions and I can't find a definition of that. So, what was in it?
Okay, you're looking at eighty-six dash sixty-one one.
That's correct.
If it's not defined, then it's the plain meaning of the, the words, flashing activated signs.
I, I was confused about this also, and I believe it's, my interpretation was it was motion activated. That's what I, that's because we're, we're discussing floodlights and things like that. I, maybe it detects a car coming by, it activates, I'm not sure. Flashing and activating.
No, I was with Fred on this. I mean, in law, in contractual law, the interpretation is always plain English. And flashing is bling, 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 that's flashing. So this, if they wanted, and they will not, I'm not, don't, I'm not picking on you. If they wanted to say motion activated, then they would write motion activated, so that's why.
It's just a little.
Yeah, and that's the way a court would look at it, they'd say, well, the legislator wanted to say motion activated, they were, motion activated, and they said flashing. So, I mean, it is plain English. The problem I had, what, what started this whole monster was, there was no definition of sign. And that, that was confusing to me, because really, what is a sign? And that was a more basic question, because is that banner considered a sign? I think it should be, you know? You know, if somebody made a big neon sculpture or something that says, you know, I love Beller Beach, is that a sign? I think it is. You know, so we, that's where Fred was tasked with coming up with the meaning of some of the signs. And he had some, you know, a lot of detail in here, which I don't know that it's a bad thing, I really don't. It doesn't bother me if you have to read through thirty pages.
No, but I don't understand what a flashing activated sign is. I'm used to flashing signs, flashing lights, flashing warning caution lights, but I don't know what flashing activated sign is.
It's activated, that's the question, what activated?
I guess that's.
Okay.
To me, activated is, it's like light bulbs, as opposed to one of those that shimmer, like, as you move by, they change color and shimmer as they catch the light, so activated to me is like electrical bulbs.
Maybe just say flashing signs, takes care of that.
I, I assure you, it's not a term I dreamed up.
Yeah.
It's a term I got from another, uh, city that, or it may have been, I can't remember. This may have been in the original ordinance. I, I simply don't recall.
I, I think you could take each one of these definitions and probably try to figure out a different way of interpreting it. So I think, like what Fred said, if it's just thirty-four, leave it.
It just, if you have anything that has to be edited, I mean, you know, this is a concern now. You know, we've had two council members that I don't understand, then I'm gonna take them at their word. Activated is questionable, necessarily what it means, but if there's anything we wanna change, even though it's a thirty-page ordinance, we can't change too much of it and still get through with the first reading. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we're gonna change it tonight, is the night, if there's any questions, let's change it now. If we want a better definition of that claim, then let's ask Fred to put the better definition, put it in for the thing, for the next reading. But what I'm trying to do is say, do we have enough consensus to move this out of committee, up for a vote? If it fails, you keep your, you keep your sign ordinance that you have, and you go from there.
There may be a definition in another, uh, ordinance in another city. And if, if y'all would, would like a better definition to make sure there's not uncertainty as to what it means, then the, the easy solution is to define it.
And, and that's where I'm struggling with this, and, and I understand why Glenn called it out, is because, okay, what activated it?
Yeah, no, you can define that.
What we're talking about is, if you turn your, turn a, flip a switch in your house and the thing starts flashing, you can't have it. I, I'm not sure, I don't know where we're going with this.
Should we define it? Is there anything else that anybody picked up on?
Um, on page twenty, towards the bottom, in B, placement authorization, no temporary sign shall be erected on any property without the authorization of the owner or residence thereof. And then down below that, it says, no temporary sign shall be erected on any property without the authorization of the property owner or residence thereof. And I'm trying to figure out what, because you're gonna accept on the first one. You see what I'm tapping about? Bottom of page twenty.
That would seem to be extra.
Pardon?
That would seem to be extra.
Yeah, I think we got an extra thing in there.
Fred, did, was there special meaning to it?
I'm, I see at the bottom of page twenty, where's the other reference you're talking about?
There's, there's in B, placement authorization, no temporary sign shall be erected on any property. And then underneath that, in its own paragraph, says, no temporary sign shall be erected on any property.
It's unnecessarily repeated, so one of them would need to be taken out.
Yeah, and I, I'm in favor of making everybody a two foot by three foot sign.
Can I just cut in for a second? Are we all good with two foot by three foot?
For the purpose of this. I'm really not. I, I prefer the smaller one. I know we're trying to simplify it, but, um, those are big signs.
That's gonna be everybody, though, if we do that. I mean, every, the Realtors are gonna have to cram their thing into the two by three, and I'm not, and I don't wanna hear it. You know, that they can't fit in all their information, I mean.
Well, I, I didn't, uh, I, I don't necessarily think that, uh, it's where the council decides. But as far as standard yard signs go, the garage sales, the political signs, I don't wanna see three by five or whatever size they do. But is it two by three? I, I don't want those all in the neighborhood. Especially if we have a storm or something like that, they're giant sales.
Well, I mean, but that's the way it's gonna be then too, for construction ones too. So you build in this big house, you're gonna have to put a two by three. I, I have no problem, as long as we're consistent. I don't, I think, you can't go smaller than the, um, what I called the campaign sign the first one, I'm ensuring. I think that's the smallest practical button.
And even the construction signs, uh, I have an empty lot, uh, two lots down from me, and they had a large sign, and that thing was blown over, knocked down, and, and disrepair within a month after they put it up. And then every time they would come back and make repairs, it got up there, and up there, and up there. And, uh, I just think it's, it's too much.
I, I agree with the construction signs, and I'm trying to find it, um, were considerably larger than the two foot by three foot.
Yeah, but we said, we said the standard, I said, right, that was the idea, was to, everything, so whatever we pick, like Fred said earlier, make it standard. It, it doesn't matter to me, I think, the standard, I call it the standard campaign sign, you can put your message on it. If it's, I've seen plenty of construct- If it's, I've seen plenty of construction people, you know, drywall by Johnny, and, you know, has the telephone number, and get your message out. But some of these construction guys, they're putting these signs that are literally four-by-fours, you know, that are mounted on four-by-fours, that are huge. And, you know, this is another project by, you know, Joshua Mogi. Well, that's wonderful, but you're gonna have to put that on that little sign now.
I mean, I'm kind of weddling this because I don't want gigantic signs either. The only part I'm leaning towards the two-by-threes, the realtor signs on that wood, you know. Would that little sign be visible enough for them? I don't want to hinder anybody selling their house because their sign's not visible, but I also don't want two-by-three-foot construction real. So, I don't know. I'm kind of, but then kind of to me, it's like nowadays in the digital world, all you need to do is put the name of the realtor company, the name of the realtor, and the phone number, and that, or website, and that should be plenty on that yard sign.
And in fact, lately, the last few homes that we've seen go on the market and then immediately come off the market, never even received a sign.
But remember, this is an ordinance that's gonna last for, you know, hopefully decades too, so you may not always have a market like this, so.
Now, does this include the signs with the post in the ground and the swinging, or is it just a stick-in-the-yard sign?
The size that I gave you, the twenty-four by twenty-four, that, that was the sign that's swinging on that post with the realtor.
Then maybe we can change it to twen, up to twenty-four by twenty-four, so they'll cover the realtor but not be gigantic.
Right.
Kind of the middle.
Hey, if you want a special or a twenty-four by twenty-four political sign, or a yard sale sign.
You'll pay for it. Can you hold up the twenty-four by twenty-four next to the eighteen by twenty-four, just so we can all see?
All right, here's what I would suggest, so we can move this forward. Without, tell me if I'm wrong on any of this, Fred. We can leave that size open for discussion at the next council meeting. Put that in and vote on this. Have Lynn bring the two sign opportunities. We're missing two council members tonight. It's not binding what we say. I don't want to limit anybody as to what the sign's going to be. So, leave that part open. I don't think we're misleading the public. Say it's gonna be up to two-foot by three-foot, but that's, then put a little asterisk that this is subject to discussion at the council meeting. And when we bring this up for discussion, we will, somebody will come up with an amendment to the, to the ordinance without causing us to have to do a re-review or re-advertising. That's, if not, we have to pick it tonight, and we're not supposed to vote tonight. So, I don't know what we do.
Well, I would say, let's pick it tonight, put it in, and then if the other two have a big objection to it, change it at that time. Because to me, that's the whole purpose of doing it here, so we limit all of this drama at the other meeting. And to me, if you feel strongly about the sign, then you need to somehow get to this meeting by phone, by Zoom, by something, make an effort, or ease new shoes.
Leslie?
Um, I found the, the reference I was thinking to on the construction signs, it's on page twenty. They shall not exceed fifteen square feet in area. Do we have a fifteen-square-feet-in-area sign there?
Three-by-five.
Yeah.
That was that, three-by-five, I should have.
All of that's gonna have to change then. So, you know what, before we do a quick little consensus vote, let's open this up to the citizens.
Can I make a few comments?
Sure, then I'll open up the citizens, okay?
Okay, the couple comments are, I'll start with the size. I would strongly encourage you to make it uniform regardless of what you end up choosing. Because if it's, if it's uniform, then it takes away the issue of you're favoring one class over another. In addition, it makes it easier for enforcement purposes. So, you know, that, that, whatever you guys decide is fine. Having said that, the, the discussion that you related about shortening it by including the legislative intent in the recitals is fine. Okay? There's a reason for me putting it in the way I did, is as a code provision. To me, that makes the code provision stronger because you have made that an express part of the legislation. But having it as a recital in the ordinance where you adopt it is another way of doing it. And to me, it's not quite as strong, but it's, it's a degree lower in strength. It, to me, if, if, there's a key thing that is important for you to understand in evaluating where we are. The stuff that's related to legislative intent is to go to the point of this is what is important for this city. And as a home rule concept, this city is stating very clearly in the legislative intent that this is not U.S. nineteen with all the, you know, hundreds of signs in every block. This is a residential community. There's no commercial, there's no real, uh, no, uh, commercial, no retail. And you value the aesthetics of your community. The, the, conceptually, the purpose in putting that in there is that if you ever have to go to court to defend it, you are in a much better position if you have stayed at the basis for, for why you made these kind of decisions. You made the decisions because we, we want this to be an attractive aesthetic community. We don't want this residential community to be a haven for people putting up signs. In the, the political portion of it, it's only for thirty days. You had said forty-five, so I'm correcting that. Because I, if I don't, somebody will leave here thinking it was forty-five. It's not. The thirty is what was, um, there's a case that I came across, which, you know, what's hard to do. It, it just takes time to, to look at all these different things. The thirty days is, is a standard, and you're not going to get in trouble with that. If you lengthen it to forty-five or shorten it to fifteen, you're likely to have problems with it. Thirty is a safe harbor number, so I would encourage you to stick with, with that. The, when this all began, Mayor Nanzo kind of explained how it evolved. Initially, the, the changes were to the political signs. And then the question was raised, aren't there problems with other parts of this? And, you know, my answer was, there's other parts of it that you can, if you can change and you can modify. And a lot of this stuff, I think, was lightly written, I would say, at least two decades ago, maybe more like three or four. And believe me, in that period of time, there had been countless cases in the federal courts on signs and constitutional rights and freedom of speech. And one of the most maddening things about this whole process is that, in my opinion, the court opinions are not consistent. I mean, every law review article I've read on how do you structure a municipal sign ordinance starts out with the same thing. This is a quagmire. The, the court rulings are inconsistent. So, when you read that over and over again, you know going in, that is what you're dealing with. So, I, again, will, will circle back to the legislative intent. The, the object of the legislative intent is to say, these, these are what things are important for this community. And you, if you ever go to court, there's a separability provision in there towards the end. If you ever go to court, you, you get to say to the judge, we made every reasonable effort to put in place something that reflected our community's values. We live in a residential community, we value aesthetics. We have uniformity in the sign size, and we don't want a bunch of clutter. And if the judge says, that's fine, I hear the rap, but at the end of the day, I'm going to rule it's unconstitutional, then hopefully you will be limited to ruling one provision unconstitutional, and the rest of it will stand. That's the object. Uh, the, taking the definitions and moving them, I would not encourage that because it's, I, I think you could do it, but I would not encourage you to do it. I would encourage you, you, if you're going to try to shorten it in some manner, then take the legislative intent and put that in the body of the ordinance. Keep the definitions because the, the text and the legal standards that are outlined throughout the, the changes to the code are certainly dependent on the definitions. I didn't come up with the definitions. I looked at a whole bunch of different cities around the state of Florida and looked at how they use, use their definition provisions. And I, um, liberally borrowed from other cities within the state, which is typical of what lawyers do. So, I, could, could we add things? You could add all sorts of stuff. Um, I actually, believe it or not, I know you won't believe it, I'll say anyway, I tried to change as little as I possibly could. And, you know, still, it went, you know, far longer than I would have ever liked. But I think it's, it's as sound as you can get, or as sound as you can reasonably get. There's all sorts of things that I could have spent, you know, hours and hours and hours more researching it, and I would have come back and said the same thing. The case law is inconsistent. And what you're really trying to do with this is be able, if you were ever challenged on something, you know, before you ever get the challenge, you would do what we did first with Mr. Athen Dulos, who is actually an extremely reasonable guy. And, you know, him and I talked about it, Lynn and I talked about it, Lynn talked to him, and then I spoke to him a second time. And he, he did not want to cause an issue other than to suggest that we needed to look at changes. And, um, he was extremely reasonable about everything. And we found a way to go forward without there being a federal lawsuit. And that, that's what we did. In the future, if you pass this the way it is now, once you make the decision on sign size and somebody else comes in, that does not mean somebody that puts up a twenty-by-twenty-foot sign, um, you know, they, they may, if they do that and says, do something about it, then, you know, you, you bring an enforcement case and you prosecute the enforcement case. And if you end up in federal court over that, that's, you know, you, the guy wasn't going to comply no matter what you did. And in that situation, then you hammer on. We, we put in place stuff that is consistent with our community standards. And we, we went through a lengthy deliberative process to get here, and we did stuff that was reasonable. And I would hope a, a federal judge would agree with you.
Fred, I wanted to just clarify one thing. When I said forty-five days, and I look back over here to what you were referring to. So, that says temporary political signs shall be removed within thirty days. I was talking about their initial place. We used to have an old order that you couldn't put a sign out until forty-five days before the election. Now, we very smartly, and I think it was one of the things I brought up with you, we pull back, okay? Because you may have a political belief, you know, pick your favorite party and, you know, go whatever, go Democrats, go Republicans. You want to put that in your front yard. Okay. You know, it's not really for an election, it's just you're supporting your party, so that allows that. But we used to have forty-five days before the election, and that barely was enough time because of early voting and other stuff. Like you said, this was many ten years ago or twenty years ago. And now, if you look, the prevalence is on early voting here. So, if you're putting your signs out, you know, too close to the election, half the people have already voted, it's no, it's not gonna help you. So, that was what I was referring to. I have no problem saying thirty days after the election, it's time to take out your Republican free sign. You know, the election's over, he's not gonna run again. That's that. Let's go to the audience after going, okay?
I have a little question. I remember when I was writing, I put a sign, there was a corner lot right here on Calway and one of the side streets. And I had one on the side street and one on, you know, Calway, because that's the best visibility. And I was told I could only put one per property. Is that in here?
I think so. I think it's, I don't know, I mean, we had that with one per property, one, you know, one per property, per customer, per candidate.
Yeah, like, like I can't put two of my signs, one on each street. Why don't, is that in here? I'm just curious.
I think so.
Uh, something about corner lots, that you could put one on each street.
Offense in your way.
I remember where she told me from.
Well, it's not in there because that, that was one of the cases somewhere along the line that I read of. The, the reason is that if you have a family of four, you may have four very different political perspectives. And the family, it, it doesn't help with family harmony, but for political purposes, they all should be able to, to exercise their voice. And, you know, what really shouldn't happen is somebody puts a hundred signs in their yard. That, that to me is.
That's clear.
Inconsistent with, you know, being a reasonable neighbor, but.
Technically not. It's discouraged for neighborly, but technically good.
You could have one for every candidate. You know, you could have, if there's three people running for council and one person running for mayor, you could have four signs in your yard, four different people, but.
Yeah, but like a corner lot, can I do one on each corner?
I think so. I think you could have one, pick the, pick the road you want. That's what I did.
I didn't want that specified again. I remember someone pointed that out, and I didn't know if that was still in here.
Well, this is, is like the, the path of water, okay? The path of water is always going to be the same. It's going to end up at the lowest destination it can, it can go because of gravity. The, this is not bulletproof, that was said. It is, I, I readily agree it's not bulletproof. And there may be people in this community that will spend nights devising a way to circumvent the intent. And, you know, if that's the way they spend their time, so be it. I, actually, the, the longer I observe this stuff, I, I sadly will tell you, I know there are people that do that. That is what they do. But, you know, you're trying to put in reasonable standards that reasonable people will comply with. And will there be outliers? I guarantee you, there will be outliers. Hopefully, they will be at a minimum.
Well, then I would say, my, my opinion would be to keep it as is and change it to, the dimensions to twenty-four by twenty-four, so it covers realtors and doesn't get too garish and big. And then maybe add the flashing activated definition, just for complete clarity.
Leave that on the line, two that.
Oh, yeah, just leave the line that, let's just point out.
Well, I agree that on twenty-four by twenty-four is a good size to go out with this.
It was twenty-four by thirty-six.
No, he, that was, Dave said, he thought that was too big, so then we went twenty-four by twenty. I mean, if we're split on it, we're gonna have to put something in to go to the meeting with, so. How many want twenty-four by twenty-four? Twenty, and the other choice was two by three?
Yeah.
Sorry, Leslie, it's two by three. So, it's not binding, but let's go with twenty-four by twenty-four. And that would be all references then changed. I do want to hear from the citizens though, before we find out.
I will, we're coming.
Okay, Leslie, that's citizens.
Permit temporary signs eighty-six dash sixty-four says, within forty-eight hours after the culmination of the event, sale, election, et cetera, et cetera. The, um, the owner shall remove all posted temporary signs. And then under political signs, it talks about removing them within thirty days of the election. Does the fact that it's a temporary political sign override the forty-eight hours? Is it's more specific?
You're looking at, at eighty-six sixty-four, what?
Sub A.
First eighty-six sixty-five, B three.
Yeah.
Do you need to predict a reading?
I, I would suggest we delete election from, from that. And that way, you, you're addressing completely political signs.
Specifically the political sign department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Lynn, I'm gonna say this officially when we pass this, but I, I know it says about impounding signs and stuff, but, you know, we just had a thing about code being about compliance and, and education. I'd use the education route before I'd use the impound route because nothing's gonna set. You know, if you want to find that person who's out there to test us, impound a sign, that's gonna get them riled up. But if you say, listen, you know, like Robin's question, there's a legitimate question. I got a corner lot, I've got Gulf Boulevard, and I've got Twenty-Second Street, both of them are high-traffic areas. Which one do I want? I want both. I mean, you can't have both. Take your choice. And if your code officer says that as opposed to pulling one, we might be in a much better way, you know. So, I would just suggest that it's not gonna go in this ordinance, but in terms of enforcement, before we pull anything, because once you pull it, now you've got theoretically the violation if somebody wants to sue you. So, I'd use that as a last resort.
Well, most of the times, when we pull a sign, it's a sign that's been left. As an example, uh, somebody put an open house sign out on the street on Sunday and didn't, I don't go. out on Gulf Boulevard, and didn't pick it up when they left. Or somebody puts a, and I know everybody's seen them, the signs that say Stucko, Call Us No.
Yeah.
Those are the things that Danny picks up, really. And most people don't even come and ask for them.
I could just be more sensitive with political sign. I mean, the ones that are nailed to a pole, pull them down right away, but, you know, the political sign...
No, no, sure. The ones he, he pretty much picks up are things like open houses, or somebody did a roof on, you know, two weeks ago, and, you know, it shouldn't be there after the project.
Do you keep them for a certain period of time before you...
Seven days. And if they want to come and get them, then it's like, come and get them, that's good.
Citizens, I promise you. Jim, that's great.
I agree with Robin, Ockie, that it should be up to, so what if you're just putting a regular sign, and you didn't want to spend the expense of buying a bigger sign? I mean, why does it have to be that big? Why can't you go smaller?
You were saying up to.
So up to?
Up to, your choice, as long as you don't exceed.
Because I didn't just hear that, so that's what I'm asking. Up to should be my thing, I would think.
That's what we've been saying earlier.
They're all at, as he's walking up, the language in the code provisions say, "Shall not exceed."
Right.
So that's what it would be, based on whatever choice you end up making.
And, you know, I like the square foot thing, so like, if you want to have, like, two inches stretched out, be my guest. I mean, we could say 2 by 2, or we could just say, like, we did with that construction sign, no greater than 15 square feet, we could say no greater than 4 square feet, you split it out however you want to do, because if you've got some long name, maybe you want 1 foot by 5 foot, I don't know, but maybe you just want to give a maximum square footage, okay? You know, we don't allow short names. Roger?
Roger Mall, 115 Causeway Boulevard. Dave, I think I got an answer for your question.
Roger, can you just either pull the mic up or bend down, oh, there you go.
I think I have an answer for your flashing sign. Nationally, I don't think there's been enough incidences where either flashing lights or flashing signs have caused neurological disturbances and precipitated seizures and migraines and bipolar disorders, or neurological disorders. So I think it's probably well placed in there, because we want people getting their neurological bad. The only other comment I have is, and I think you're probably on the right track, is that I don't think you should have any exceptions, whatever size of a sign you decide on that, just because you are dealing with free speech, and that's a code that we all love to amend, and so I, you know, every time you give an exclusion, then you open a Pandora's box. So I would advise that you're not putting any exceptions whatsoever, so, thanks, guys.
I think where we stand now is that we don't have any exceptions. I think we said everybody's same size as up to, up to 4 square feet, if that's what we want to go with, and break it out.
Thanks, guys.
Everybody's equal. Anybody else? Yes?
I just have a couple, I guess a number of questions. So the sign ordinance, it's going to apply to the motel, to the condos, I'm assuming? Is that correct?
It applies to everybody, all signs.
So now they can put in digital signs. Are we going to regulate that at all? Are we going to say they can flash, they can't flash, or do we already say that you can't have flashing signs? Are we going to have hours of operation, that they have to shut them off at 8 o'clock like we do with our construction? I think those are the things that we should be discussing as well. And what's their sign restriction size? How big is the sign, and do they put one out like we did in City Hall?
We have two, just so you know, we have two different, we have the permanent signs versus the temporary signs. We've been talking, I think mostly what we've been talking tonight is temporary signs, but...
So you're only going to change the temporarys?
No, theirs, their permanents are...
That's what I thought. So I haven't heard any discussion on that at all. So I'm assuming that everything that they're talking about thus far is only applies to temporary signs, is that correct?
At least I've spoken about, I don't know about other people, but, yeah.
I haven't heard the delineation made, so that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
But I think that that should be in our sign ordinance as well, I think we need to look forward, obviously, we're going to get digital signs put out throughout our city. And to Lynn's point, with the people leaving their open house signs and things like that, I agree that we should be able to take them in. The ones, most of the ones I see that are lapped around the Eastman's anyway, and you're not supposed to be putting signs on the Eastman's anyway. So I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but I would assume that we would have some protection there in having them removed, because they're on the, for the most part, they're on the Eastman's. Yeah, I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. So what, anybody else in the citizens, before I turn it back here for this discussion? So we have a couple of questions about the commercial signs versus the individual signs, and then with removal. You know, obviously, if it's abandoned, we take it down, that's an easy one. Signs on the Eastman, we're all over the place with this, it's not evenly enforced. You've got a violating sign right on Crossman Park right now, you're within 1 foot of the sidewalk. So we should follow the same rules that we ask everybody else to do. And we permit people to put signs in the right way, outside City Hall, which we're not, it's, I know, it's county property, but it's wrong. So unless you want every open house, every Joe Stucko, and everybody else putting their signs there, then, you know, we need to step up the county enforcement, the county sheriff can pull those signs. But yet, we kind of turn a blind eye on things sometime, if we like the message or we don't like the message, they should all be confiscated. I'll stick my law firm sign outside City Hall, I'd love to, it's Causeway Boulevard, but that would be confiscated, but yet, political signs aren't confiscated, they shouldn't be there, and I can tell you the people who put them. So that shouldn't be there at all. And, you know, if we're going to do a, you know, the dog show, that's wonderful, we should advertise it, but let's be consistent with where we advertise it. And that goes for everybody. We need to follow the same rules we ask everybody else to abide by, if not, again, you open yourself up, okay? I'm not going to keep harping on it, but you open yourself up, okay? That's an equal protection issue if you don't enforce your laws, people. As for the big signs versus small signs in commercial versus, I know there's a commercial section, I haven't reviewed this in detail, you know, I've memorized it, so I, there are different sign requirements for commercial businesses versus regular, and that is a differentiation I know we can make in the laws with us on that. But maybe I'll defer to the expert, Fred, and see what he has to say on it.
I'm looking at section 86 dash 62, which is permanent signs, and it makes a distinction between the residential medium RM District 1 and in the institutional AM District. And both of them, I don't think I changed this, refer to signs which inclusive of bases shall not exceed 120 square feet in area or 3 feet in thickness. So they, based on the way this is written, they are not going to be required to do a 2 by 3 sign. And I don't really know how, I mean, you can decide, and this, I always remember Boca Raton, because if you remember the history of Boca Raton, Boca Raton was a city that basically, to my knowledge, was started in the either late 60s, early 70s, in between, north of Fort Lauderdale, or near, between Fort Lauderdale and Miami, I don't know which side it's on. But Boca Raton was a new city, and it was incorporated, and they started fresh, with a fresh slate, and they decided, as a matter of course, they did not want it to be comparable to US 19, or what is now the road that runs through Kissimmee, is the same way. But, you know, you're not starting with a fresh slate, and I think it would be a mistake to have the idea of you're going to go to some of these places that have a large sign and invested a lot of money. One way of dealing with that is to grandfather existing stuff in, and from a certain date forward, somebody has to meet a new standard, that's one way of doing it. But I, again, looking at these provisions, I do not think I changed these at all, and that's what was on the original code provision we started with, and if y'all want to modify that somehow, then we probably need to discuss it further.
Fred, as best I remember it, we never were talking about the commercial signs to answer Debbie's question. I remember bringing this up when we were talking about the sign outside, and I said, well, everyone can get digital, and I think the city manager said, well, they can right now if they wanted to. So, you know, you can get it digital if you're a motel owner, they've chosen not to, yes, they can if they want, as long as they stay within these other rules that we have here. So we're not going to limit, I never intended that a motel owner be limited to a 2 foot by 2 foot sign, that wasn't the, this was really prompted by citizen issues that we had, particularly the banner guy, and the, some of the political signs that were going up way early, and then, you know, this incident with Mr. Affan Dullos and his political signs. And there was other signs, I mean, there was a gentleman I remember coming here, and he was told to take his stuff out, and he was a pretty strong guy, and he said, the city manager told me to take one out, and I put two in. So we were going to get into a problem, okay? To think otherwise is just really fantasy land, okay? That guy was challenging us. And he even, I remember he came here and he held up a Black Lives Matter sign, he goes, "You can tell me to take this out?" And that was, of course, during the height of all protests, I don't think anybody here would have said, "Take that out." So, you know, we, yet it wouldn't be allowed by our then-existing sign ordinance, right? So that was what prompted all this, was to clean up this trap. And like Fred said, you know, are there people that'll sit up all night to try and figure out a way to beat you at this? Yeah, there's people who go around and make their living just finding cities that they can, you know, find a lawsuit on. You can't defend against that, but by putting through what we have here, you've done a good job, like I said, of closing off some of the exits here, so.
I'll add one more thing.
Glenn's next, after you go. I think Robin too.
If I understand the tone of the discussion over the last year, what concerns the city council most is what happens in your residential districts and the neighborhoods. And if you have a, and I'm just picking 2 by 3 for purposes of example, if every sign that's in the residential neighborhoods is 2 by 3, regardless of whether it's realtor sign, political sign, yard sale, doesn't matter, is all the same, then the basis for somebody to file a federal lawsuit against you, I think, is absolutely minimized. And that's likely where you're going to have the biggest exposure. So you're being reasonable, you're being uniform, and I think that's probably the best you can do.
Let me add one other thing, we cut out the content-based restrictions.
Absolutely.
That was another area that we had major vulnerability, okay? In one respect, you know, I keep talking about the political person versus the contractor. Well, if you go to a court, I'm going to tell you something, the political person's going to win out every time over the guy advertising his business. You can't stop political free speech, we fall wars over that, and you're not going to win. So this cuts that out, because in our city, the way it stands right now, the political person had the least amount of rights. That's where, we're talking about that, actually, and the next item too. That can't be, that cannot be. Glenn and Robin?
Yeah, to Debbie's point, you know, during my research with electronic signs and stuff, I mean, we may have missed the mark on this then, because the people who are going to have outrageous claims are going to be the commercial people, because they're going to have the money, I mean, that's tied to their advertising and stuff. It's not necessarily the guy back on Leader Drive or something complaining because he restricted his political sign. It's going to be the commercial enterprise out there on Gulf Boulevard, saying, "You're restricting how much revenue I can produce here." When I researched electronic signs, many of the municipalities in large cities that I looked at all have commercial sections in their signage thing. And it ties electronic signs primarily to the access roads. In other words, it's a high-volume road that you're allowed to have an electronic sign on, not necessarily back on Leader Drive, where you have maybe 10 cars a day. It goes to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning have a cut in this stuff, and that's, those are the people who sit down and think about this kind of stuff. I think maybe we need to think about that conference title, and, you know, the best practice is restrict things like brightness during the day, brightness at night, you know, how long a duration you can maximize a screen change, you can't have leg screens, things like that, and we may have missed the mark on some of this stuff. We at least need to address electronic signs in here, period, I think, because that's going to be, I think, the next problem, and that's going to be the one that's going to come more rarely than a residential, I think.
No, I like Fred's idea about grandfathering in, that way you don't go back and say, hey, you don't meet our standards, and knock down your sign, build a new one. I see where you're going with the electronic sign, but I mean, I think the only entity that would put up the electronic sign would be the motel, because I can't see any of the condos doing it. So I think it's just one entity, and, I mean, I can see, you know, covering your butt right now and try to put something in, but part of me is like, is it going to be an issue? Should we wait until it becomes an issue? Should we do it before? So I'm kind of iffy on that one. But I do agree that we probably should have something in there to circumvent the problem before it starts.
Leslie?
There is a provision in here for pre-existing signs, any sign, advertisement, or attention-attracting material or device in residential medium district.
I think it was grandfathered, right?
Yes, page 22, round page 22. And this exists prior to the enactment of the ordinance, shall be exempt. If they need to, if you want to replace it, then you have to comply with the current law.
But we didn't change anything.
It's a grandfather replacement.
Which they could probably obtain the grandfathering, even if they had to go before the planning board, because that's something that's typically always given, if not, you wind up with a takings clause issue, which I'm not going to get into preaching law, but you can't make illegal stuff that's been legal for years, so, not without allowing you to do it. You know, we could add stuff, I just think that, again, this has been kicking around in committee forever, you could always add to this. I do think we've opened up a Pandora's Box outside here, I raised that issue with the citizens, I said, everybody's going to want one, and, you know, well, when they see ours, maybe they will, you know, they didn't want it up until this point, the motel didn't come and ask for it, they could have, they didn't, but now they may. That was one of the cautions that I urged the city not to go down that road, because it doesn't belong in our city. But, yeah, I mean, you may have to put something in, but you can't exempt ourselves and tell them they can't do it, so then we're going to be back into this whole thing, well, why do you get to do it and we can? Because we're the government, you know? It's not...
The point is an exemption, the point is to bring it into alignment with the critical thinking that we've done in applying best practices and standards to how you employ or implement a digital sign. So, and I don't think, looking back over forward, saying, well, I warned you about this. No, I mean, you're dealing with it now. I mean, maybe you need to insert a placeholder or something with some plot, or to be developed at a later date, or with a deadline on it, not just kick the can down the road to be determined, I mean, to be inserted by a certain date.
Well, I mean, this was one of the problems I've had in the past with Delaware Beach before I came to council, was passing a law and saying, well, fix it later. I mean, I almost fell off my chair when I heard a prior council do that, and it wasn't this attorney, it was a different attorney, and I was like, that's not the way to pass law. So if the law stands fine the way it is, then let's bring this out of committee. If not, it could sit in committee for another two months, but we're, I mean, now if we're going to write a digital sign piece, we cannot go to first reading for November, so we have to bring it back for a work session, and now we're looking at, at best, December, January, at best, and that's if we could agree, if we even have a November, sometimes we don't even have a November work session, but that's if we could agree in November. And I'm just trying to move this thing out, we've been discussing it for an hour and a half, I'm trying to move it out of the committee up for a vote. If we want to add more to it, we can, but it's not going to ever get done at this rate. So I'm not saying pass a complete law, you're right, we did bring up about digital signs, currently you can bring it up, do it now, so if now we want to start addressing it specifically, then that'll be a whole nother assignment for Fred to start researching and...
What do you advise, Fred, as far as digital?
Well, in the definition section, it has digital or electronic signs defined, you don't have specific form... you don't have specific parameters that relate to that. So, one of my questions would be, which is a question I've asked you on other things, how big of a problem is this right now? And is it a problem? If it's not a big problem now, is it one that you feel is imminent? If it's an imminent problem, then fix it now.
We're the only ones with a digital sign, I think, right now, right? We being the city.
Again, my thought process with all of this really always revolves around, what were you really trying to do? And my understanding is, what you were really trying to do is keep the clutter out of the neighborhoods. And there are certain places along Gulf Boulevard where there are the businesses or the hotels, whatever they are, and they have existing signs. So, is that what you expect you're going to have a problem with?
That wasn't what generated this. What generated this was an almost imminent federal 1983 civil rights suit for removal of a political sign. And a threat by a citizen of, come on, take my Trump sign down, my banner that stretched the length of my house. That's how we got into this.
We're talking past each other then. I'm talking about the electronic signs issue. Is that a, on its own, is that a problem right now? And is it a problem that you think is going to be running rampant in the near future? If it is, let's, you, Robin asked, what should we do? If you think that is a problem we need to address immediately, then bring it back to the workshop a month from now. I'll find a provision that addresses that. And then you can hopefully go to the first reading in December.
You seem to be speaking out both sides of our mouth here, like, hey, this was an issue at this point. Is it a rampant problem now? Well, I'm looking down the road. And you're concerned about constitutional infractions and cases. And I'm saying, the person who's going to eat your lunch is a commercial guy whose revenue is dependent upon advertising. And I'm just looking down the road and kind of bringing us in alignment with, you know, the 2010 decade and saying, this could be an issue. And.
We're not changing anything on commercial. This is pretty much, I don't think we ever had any discussion about changing the commercial. We, actually, I think we said we could continue to enforce the commercial. It was the citizens where the problem was coming up. That's what was driving me on this thing. I had never had a complaint or heard a complaint from any of our businesses saying, my sign isn't big enough. They've been here since the 1950s, they're happy with their signs. I mean.
But we're using terminology like we have a rampant raging problem here. And all we can say is, we can point to two specific issues that were resolved or within the last year hasn't occurred until we had it again. And yet, I think very astutely, a resident is saying, hey, have you thought about this? And it's like, well, no, we haven't. I'm saying that that's the person who's going to raise an issue, is the commercial people, not necessarily the residents.
Well, again, I think technically, there's only one commercial entity that could put up a digital sign, and that's the motel. Because the condos, I've never seen a condo with a digital sign, but.
They could, if they want to.
No, true, but I'm just saying.
And they do short-term rentals, so they could.
They do. You'll see a vacancy, no vacancy sign on those signs, yeah.
They could if they want. But they can't do that now. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is they could do that now. And if you're going to say, I mean, this is really a massive discussion they can bring up, and it's fine if you want to have it. But they could do it now. They could put up the digital. They don't, staying with our existing ordinance, they could put up that digital sign now. So, nobody would say they couldn't do it. If the condo wants to say vacancies, you know, we rent by the week, call such-and-such number, flashing sign right now, that is not prohibited. If we want to be proactive and say, I mean, again, we get into this whole thing. Can we say no digital signs? I don't think so, we got a big one out front. Can we say no flashing signs? Yeah, we're promising not to flash it. You can't flash them, you know? But can we restrict the hours? Well, we haven't even worked on that for headquarters yet, but maybe, you know?
And I agree with you. Let's get proactive and get ahead of the issue. If you've got this much time invested in this thing and you've got a 25-page ordinance, let's finish it, let's do it right. And then get back and go through this.
That's careful because what we put down, the city hall has to go by that too. Because as far as I'm concerned right now, that motel can certainly put up a digital sign. And as soon as that one popped up, if I was that owner, I'd be like, time to start investing because we opened that window for them. And there's nothing prohibiting them from doing that 10 years ago, 15 years ago. So, I don't.
Give them the idea, yeah.
Yeah, we gave them the idea. So, to me, I'm like, well, we set ourselves up for that, so give the consequences.
Leslie? Ryan, on that vote, Leslie can come back to you, okay?
It is covered to not let the motel put up a sign. A sign, advertisement, or attention-attracting.
Leslie, I can't hear you if you're talking to that man.
I'm sorry. This is bottom of page 22. A sign, advertisement, or attention-attracting device or material shall not be placed or located on any property located in the city which is owned for residential medium district other than in strict compliance and conformity with the applicable provisions of this article. So, they can't, they couldn't put up a new sign that was a digital sign if you consider that an attention gathering, attention-attracting device. They couldn't put a new one up. If it's already there, they're cool, it's grandfathered in. And if they want, if anyone wants to replace it or put a new one in, you have to abide by the provisions of this article. So, that is covered.
But you can be a digital sign.
What?
You can put up a digital sign. It's not even prohibited that.
Would that be an attention-attracting device?
Every sign is. Every sign is, that's the purpose.
But I think this basically says, you know, what you got is fine. If you want to change it, you get to abide by what's in the code.
But to Glenn's point, and it's a valid one, we have been focused, I'll say, I have been focused in all my comments on residential because that's where we had the issues. We haven't had a business owner come down here. Now, he's bringing up the idea of, hey, you know what? You may get some pushback from some of the business community saying, I want a digital sign. Do we want to set some rules, parameters, and stuff? And I'm with Robin, whatever we put, we need to live by ourselves. But if you want to have Fred draft the digital sign portion of this, it's another month. I mean, we went, what, a year without this? So, it'll just be another month. Fred might want to kill us for making him draft more to this thing. But it's not a big deal. We just come up with the parameters. And I think what Glenn said, which is duration and hours of operation and all that kind of stuff.
And technically, it could be as big as the one we have out there now. It's not just the digital screen, it's the whole monument. So, they could put that one there now too. So, like, I'm always about fair. If this person can do it, then this person can do it. And if you don't want that person to do it, then don't let that person do it. I've always been black and white. So, I don't know if right now we can restrict anything because we've already opened the door. So, I don't know. I'm up for it. If you guys want to put that in to try, I'm never going to say no. But I'm just saying, I think we've already passed that point with no return.
Or we can bring this in, and then we can be adding the other stuff as an amendment. I mean, you'll at least have a sign ordinance for, again, I don't want to do what our predecessors did, which was pass stuff that we know is bad. This isn't bad. But the stuff that's going in here is good. But if we want to put more attention into a digital, then go ahead and do it. You'll have a sign ordinance in place by December if it passes. And then you can amend it as you see fit for digital and just two readings, and you add that little piece to it, so.
Or go, Debbie, to the table.
I don't have a problem working on all the commercial side of things. I will need a better understanding of the zoning and how each location, how it's owned, and.
Basically, residential medium is the west side of Gulf Boulevard. Residential low is the east side of Gulf Boulevard.
And going to Glenn's point, I agree with him that don't kick it down the road. If we decide to pass this and then come back for amendment for electronic, which I'm not against, then I say we need to set a deadline. Let's have that for a first reading by such-and-such time. Maybe consider the holidays and that, just so it's not cram session. But I'm not against that. What I'm against is stopping this whole thing, delaying this month to do something that we kind of created a potential problem where we didn't have it a few months ago. But pass this as it is, and then get to that, hopefully, in a reasonable amount of time. Because I'm certainly against kicking cans down the road.
This will allow us to at least address the neighborhoods majority of this thing.
But yet, I agree.
We go back.
We go back. And we could even put that in our resolution that we are to revisit it. I mean, we do have the holidays, and sometimes we don't have work sessions during the holidays. So, if you all want to come out on Christmas holiday, we can do that and talk about electronic signs. But, you know, we may not get to this till January realistically and, you know, and actually kick it around in a work session. So, that's up to us. We can hold a work session anytime we want. But, you know, some people have better things to do on the holidays. Fred?
Well, I will say for the purposes of the discussion, the commercial and electronic signs was not the focus over the course of the last year. The focus, again, was on what happens in the neighborhoods. Having said that, what I think you really need to bear in mind is you have an election coming up. And it would be helpful for anybody that wants to be a candidate in the election and anybody that wants to back a candidate to have clarity with some period of time prior to election season starting. And to me, election season really starts in, I would say, no later than February 1, probably before that. So, that, I think, to me, is really relevant. And there's no, I have no problem with adding the electronic sign part of it. This provision, my gut feeling is, without too much effort, I can find another city that has addressed this. They've already written in a tried-and-true provision. And the one interesting thing about looking at this stuff, a lot of the cities end up having almost the same provision from one city to the next, related to a specific topic. And I'm not going to say it's uniform throughout the state of Florida. It's not. But it is often handled in a very similar manner. This one, I would expect you would find that's the way it works. I may be surprised. But I would, and fully able to do it whichever way y'all want. Just give me direction as to how you'd like to proceed.
All right. Who wants to move this out of committee the way it is now? Coming back to circle around for this electronic signs, which is short order. I'm saying, within this council's term, that means it's concluded, concluded and voted on before March. So, whatever it takes, okay? First, second reading would be no later than, couldn't be any later than February. So, that's our deadline. If we have to have it before February, I prefer we have it for January, December, if we can. That's option number one. Or option number two is, send Fred back, change this thing, and then we'll have first reading in December, maybe, if we can meet on this.
I say, we change it to 24 by 24, add the flashing activated definition, remove that redundant word "election" and your extra line, and then bring this for first reading when, November?
November.
November.
Yeah, I'm with you. That's, it's time we vote on this. This takes care of all the residential stuff. We're coming up on election. To your point, election starts the minute that my qualifying thinks hits Patty's desk. I'm qualified candidate, that's it. My signs go away. I'm not waiting with anybody at that point in time. So, if we have this in place, it's in place. And if you don't have rules, well, then it's like Australian rules football, then there are no rules, okay? We do whatever we're going to do. And I don't want that, okay? Because then you're going to have people with gigantic billboards, and that's not our city. So, I can live with it two-foot-by-two-foot or whatever, four-foot square. So, that's two votes to move it forward. Leslie?
I would agree with that.
Move it forward. That's three, doesn't really matter. Dave, yes? Glenn?
Touch your phones and get down with it.
Okay, one time, okay. So, we have enough to move it forward. We're going to put it on the next thing. This is not a binding vote. Free to vote on it when it comes in front of us. Let's move this forward with the changes. I think Robin summarized all the changes, Fred.
I've been writing them down. I would suggest to you, if that's the direction you're going to take, then in the interim, before I see you again, I will work with Lynn to come up with a provision that relates, or that addresses the electronic signs for the businesses.
That's fine, but just don't put it in that first reading yet.
I'm just telling you.
Oh, that's fine.
That's something that, if we can get that to you before you next meet in two weeks, then it makes it a lot easier to say, well, that works on the way.
Okay.
To Glenn's point.
And we may look at that and say, yeah, that's fine. And then we could just put the amendment in. And we could theoretically be amending it as we're passing it, which is great.
So, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting you do two standalone things. And that you still do the one related electronic signs in workshop, be that in November, December, January. That will not affect your election cycle.
Glenn, can you live with that? No later than January? So, this council is going to come, yes or yea or nay, it's going to come to a vote on the digital portion of it and we address it? Because I don't think it's fair to toss it to a different council next time. We're all very familiar with this, let us vote on it.
No, I guess that's why I'm saying, touch it once, we're all in the mindset of doing it.
But I mean, we're going to move this, this is going to move forward the way it is now. I understand, but, you know, we're going to move it forward. You could say no, and that's what you probably will say, you know, that's fine. But if you don't get it that way, would you be okay with it going to what we're talking about as an alternative? I don't want to ignore a valid point. I just want to get some residential standards here before we start putting up, you know, Che Guevara banners or something on their house. Okay, we done with one? Number two. Anybody need a break? Number two. Discussion of ordinance 2108, amending section 2, Dev 63D, addressing city council. This was tabled last time at Fred Riley's suggestion. Maybe I should just go directly to Fred Riley because he wrote a memo that everybody had in their packet here. And Fred, do you mind if I vote you first on this one? I've spoken with you. I don't have to repeat what I told you, you know, everything in our discussion. So, you understood where I was coming from. And I told you that there was a certain portion of that that you were free to convey. So, I'll turn it over to you.
In the memo that I sent out to the city council prior to the last meeting where I asked for y'all to continue this, the primary focus that I had was on the sentence that was deleted. So, for purposes of everybody in the room knowing what we're talking about, I will read directly from my memo, which said, "The following sentence was deleted by the amendment to section 2-63D." Quote, "The city council may discuss prospective litigation provided that the city attorney has first advised the city council concerning admission against interest and other legal safeguards." End quote. Okay? That sentence was deleted. There was a minor modification to the prior paragraph. And the prior paragraph incorporated the shade meetings statute, which is section 286.011, subsection 8. And so, the net effect of all that is that y'all adopted on first reading an ordinance that made a change to 263- D, which net equals, you cannot discuss prospective or pending litigation except you can discuss pending litigation consistent with the shade meeting statute, which is the 286.011, subsection 8. Okay? So, the real question, or the legal standard, is what scrutiny should be applied because it's a potential constitutional law issue? This, in my opinion, would be strict scrutiny. And strict scrutiny means that you are, if you're going to regulate free speech, then you choose the least restrictive means. then you choose the least restrictive means. When you, by, by deleting that, I, I would not say you're choosing the least restrictive means. I searched, you know, quite a few different ways, six ways to Sunday to try and find a case or try and find a, how another city was handling this in a better way. And this happened to be one of these times. For whatever reason, I did not find a case that I thought was particularly relevant and I didn't find another city handling this provision in a particularly relevant way that gave me something that, that I could point to and say, this is, this is really the way to go. The, the reason for the, me to ask for continuance is I had some hope and some optimism that you as a council could discuss it in, in a non-voting type situation and see if there was some way that you could find a, a compromised language or position so that you, you didn't end up with what, what I felt we ended up with the last time this was really addressed. The, the place where I thought, thought we ended up with was you had one council member who wanted me to, to give some assurance that there's no basis for a federal lawsuit. And you had another council member that was concerned that this would result in a federal lawsuit. And those are two polar positions. And I try as I might, I, I would like to thread the needle, but it is extremely difficult when you have two polar positions. So that's the background. I've spoken to several, several of you. I, I don't have not spoken to everybody, but you know, my request is that the council again, discuss this and see if there is some, some way that you can find a combination that will work and that, that won't, you know, touch off World War III. Having, having said all that, a lot of cities don't have anything like this. They don't have a prohibition on discussing pending or prospective litigation. In a way, Miller Beach is somewhat unique because you do have a provision. So that's where, that's where we, the, the issue stands. And I, I'm here to do my level best to help you find a way to solve the, the issue.
So I'm the person who brought all this up because I've been directly affected by it twice. Okay? So the council member who brought this up and said she wanted to prevent a lawsuit, that's only by my grace. I've already, I've already been wronged. So this isn't about me being wronged. I'm going to do it Mr. Athandulos. Let's use this as a learning moment and a teaching moment and move this thing forward the right way as a city. Okay? Nobody on this council passed this bad law. It's unconstitutional. It's unconstitutional with the changes. You agree with me and I'm glad you did. I read the strict scrutiny rule into the record last time verbatim and asked Patty to put it in. It is strict scrutiny. What that means is it has to pass the highest level of scrutiny that the court can give it. It has to be something that is absolutely necessary and at its least restrictive means. It's not absolutely necessary. We heard from Glenn Gunn. We have insurance. Okay? And it has to be least restrictive means. Well, if it's so important, then why do we allow people to come up here from the citizenry and speak about it, but yet we can't rebut them as political elected officials? Now, I'm going to fight for every single elected official's rights, whether I like you or I hate you. I'm not going to have this city squelch anyone and particularly me. Okay? So in terms of a federal suit, you already could be in a federal suit, whether you change this or not. But this law was passed in 1999 and I looked up, I looked at a newspaper and I looked up some of the people who were on our council. I never heard of half of these people. William Mattonbury, Stuart Scott, Charlie Parker, Burt Cutler, David Fish Keller, John Williams, and Charles Chuck Pollak and Elizabeth, I don't know if I cut up, I think Elizabeth Parker or something. I don't know any of those people except for Chuck Pollak. So we don't owe anybody anything. It was bad law. Maybe it was good law at the time. Maybe Supreme Court cases came out afterwards. Maybe they were getting bad legal advice. I don't know. I don't care. It's bad law now. So here's the way you fix it. The reason why you can't, I'll submit to you why you can't find other cities that have this is because they're smarter than us. Because it's unconstitutional the way we have it. That's why other cities don't have it. Legislature, legislature has given us the provision for speaking about current lawsuits in the shade. We don't have to share our strategy or our settlement negotiations with the public. That's called a shade meeting. And we don't even have to put it in our ordinance because quite frankly, the legislature has already given us that right. Okay? It's Florida section 286.0118. It's already there. We don't need to say it. Where we have a problem is this is what's known as a limited public forum. You can come here, but like we, Dave was talking earlier, you can't make noise. You can't, there's certain things you can't do. Okay? Some places allow you to make a sign. We don't allow you to make a sign in our place. So we have certain rules that you have to abide by. We have to abide by the rules. You have to abide by them. You can't get up here and start screaming from your seats like it's a wrestling match. We don't allow that. You have to come up here and speak after you're recognized. But what we do now, and where I have a major problem with this, is we allow citizens, and this happened folks, this happened. Okay? Jules Chandler came up here and just ripped into me. I was on the road. Glenn Gunn was temporarily chairing the meeting. I made five points of war. She couldn't complete a sentence without insulting me. And I wanted to rebut it and I couldn't rebut it. Cause we're not allowed to discuss lawsuits. So he followed the policy and said, I'm not allowed to let you speak on it. More recently, we had a legal situation and I wanted to bring a motion related to that, which was for the city's protection. And I was told you better not do it. I don't hold it against the city attorney who told me I shouldn't do it. He just advised me as to what the ramifications could possibly be. Problem is there shouldn't be any ramifications. I'm an elected official. I have the right to bring a motion. Now, the fact that somebody may say something that's a declaration against interest doesn't seem to bother us. And this is not a personal attack when the city manager makes it set a declaration against interest in the newspaper, because that's what you have. A declaration against interest on a pending lawsuit, yet there's no prohibition against him speaking that way. What have we just been talking about with signs? Do it for one, do it for all. If I can't talk about it and I'm an elected official, then no citizen should be able to come up here and talk about it in this forum. And the city manager shouldn't be able to go out and do a newspaper interview about it. I'm a declaration against interest. I'll submit to you. I think any attorney will. Get rid of this completely. If you do want to permit citizens to come up, and I hate to limit any citizen's right to come up. I think the citizen should come up and say, you know what? We're sick and tired of these lawsuits. We're sick and tired of this, whatever we're sick and tired of. Let them come up. But then the person on the council should have the right to rebut it with the warning always from the city attorney. Like, okay, I know you're mad. Watch what you say because you could really hang the city here. But if your justification for this rule, and that's all I heard was declaration against interest, which is a financial consideration, and Glenn Gunn said tonight, and two council meetings ago, we got insurance for that. Didn't cost us anything for a slip and fall. We don't care if Florida leave the cities. He even said, we don't care, but Florida leave the cities is going to pay for this. Then tell me about why it's a financial concern for us. And if financial concern you think is going to make strict scrutiny, I will maintain to you, it will not. You will lose if this gets challenged. And it will get challenged, whether it be from an elected mayor who's squelched twice or the next public official. You don't lose your rights by getting elected here. We play by the same rules that the citizens play by. And if they can come up and talk about a lawsuit, then we should be able to rebut them. Rebut some of the nonsense that they heard, some of the incorrect assumptions that they heard about that, about lawsuits and be able to give them the information. Again, I have no problem with the city attorney saying, watch what you say. But if somebody says the wrong thing, oh well, that happens. We can always say the wrong thing. We're privy to a lot of information. So I don't think this is going to hold water. I think the other cities wisely don't have it. And either you cut it out for everybody or you allow it for everybody. And the warning goes out when the city council's going to speak from the city attorney. And it's very easily fixed by simply taking, I don't care whether we leave the pending litigation Florida statute and that's just repetitive for the state statutes. But what we have to do to fix this is say, the sentence that we took out, "The city council may discuss what we should add is current and prospective litigation provided that the city attorney has first advised the city council concerning admissions against interest and other legal safeguards." Period. If you want to say something, that's it. If we're going to discuss strategy, city ma, the city attorney should shut us down and I will shut you down, or the mayor should shut you down and say, wait a minute, we don't want to disclose legal strategy. Just like when we start talking about security. Wait a minute, this is shade meeting. We don't talk about this. That's my pro, my, my proposal. You change, say, we discuss current and prospective litigation. Then you have a const, I think you have a constitutional thing which allows everybody to come in and speak about prospective and current litigation. Leaving us the option of a shade if we need it. That's it.
All right. Here's my concern. I, I do agree with you. I, I understand where you're coming from. However, there's a level of trust that, that we must have with everyone on this council. And I'll give you a good example. You wanted to bring up pending litigation and use it in a certain way of sort of weaponize it and.
That's not correct, but I'll go ahead.
Well, that's, that's what it looked like to me. And, and it was stopped only because of, only because of this particular section, but under normal circumstances, I would not expect that to happen. Instead, I would expect refrain and the, the council's best interests at heart. So I, I hear you and I understand what you're, what you're, what you're doing, but it's this level of paranoia that's been created because of our history together. It's been bad. It's been very bad. And whenever we started reviewing this, absolutely not. I didn't want to change it and for good reason. And I think that the people that did vote on it felt the same way. In fact, I think the people that didn't vote on it felt the same way, or they were at least teetering on the edge of whether they, they wanted to, to push this through or not. So I know where you're going with this. I, I don't see me winning this for good reason. I, I understand. But you must understand what my reason for, for wanting to change what was, what was proposed. It was fully justified and I was looking out for the best interest of this city and the council. And I see where this is going. If it, if it's not dropped, you know, I, all I can do is raise, raise the white flag and, and ask you to cease fire and let's move forward and, and fix it.
I'm not firing at anyone. Let's understand something. I do, I will, I hear you, what you said. I understand. Remember, one of the things we talked about with Roberts wins wars, you don't point to what a person's motives are. So you know, we just had Dave kind of saying what he thought my motives were, which weren't. My motives were the same reason why we actually had this, was that so no declarations of interest could be made against the city. A council member, I'm not going to get in particular with things, said, "We value First Amendment rights. This is post lawsuit." You do? You think you're going to get a question on that? My guess is you will. That's what I was trying to avoid. I was saying, you know what? Anything you say can and will be used against you by people. This is not my lawsuit, folks. There's people listening every day. Then they're going to pick through every little thing and they're going to say, oh, you said you value First Amendment rights. Well, such and such happened and did you value First Amendment rights and blah, blah, blah. That was what my idea was, was short circuit any more damage, stop the bleeding, stop the damage. That's what this was all about. But you know what? To your point, let's just, let's take for a second, argue the argument and say, let's say I did have a really bad motive. I want to get rid of all the people on the council. You know, get all new people, three new people. You guys can vote that down. You should come up for discussion and you could knock it down. You can't stop of all people, an elected official from speaking his mind in his forum or her mind in her forum. You're, you just can't, not for this issue, because this issue personally affects you. Forget about this issue. Any issue. Maybe I have the worst intentions or the next person has the worst intentions in the world. Okay. Expose it. You can't talk about their intentions, but expose why it's a bad bill, expose why it's a bad proposal. Has to get a motion. It has to get a second. It has to get four out of seven votes. If it's no good, it probably won't pass. This may have not passed, but I sense that it might not have passed, but it may have. I wanted to speak why, and if people were convinced, then they would go forward with it. It was non-binding. So it wouldn't matter anyway. We can't force anybody to step aside. So that was the whole point behind it. Now, this isn't a bargain. This isn't change this or else. It's, you have to trust me. As I said, this is a Mr. Athandulos. And you know how Mr. Athandulos's thing worked out. I thought he had a clear path if he wanted to proceed. I don't want to teach lessons the hard way. Okay? But I will fight like hell for rights. And if you don't know that about me by now, go look up at the pending lawsuit in Belichick. Okay? I'm not going to let anybody trample elected officials' rights, be it yours, be it Rita's, be it mine. I just won't let that happen. And I will let it happen if I'm not elected official. When we lose that, lose our democracy. I'm not going to have some city tell me what I can talk about when they let the city, and I'm not picking on Lynn. He was fully within his rights of giving that interview. It should have never been done. Should have never been said. If I can't say that here, then why is he allowed to say it on the outside? He represents the city. You don't think that's a declaration against interest, what he said? That the city was justified in doing what it did? I think it is. Go ahead.
You know, I'm, I'm with Dave's interview on this. Like I, I want everybody to have equal say, the ability to say what you're allowed to. And I agree, like they shouldn't be able to come up here and say their opinion and we can't say it back. Cause that's not fair. But then I understand the whole trust thing. Cause sometimes when people, you know, when you get heated, we're all kind of on edge. Like, oh, what's going to come out in a bit of passion or rage or, so I think it goes back to trust that we're going to have to trust you to listen to the city attorney's caution and to listen to your internal caution. Cause I'm Italian. I get it. Once I get heated, I go, but you have to learn to, and you know, when it comes to you individually, if you say something that's going to affect you, you put yourself in hot water. Well, that's on you. That's just, you'll have to deal with it. But when you put something you may say, put the city in hot water, not all of us have to deal with it. And that I'm not okay with. So I, I get those points. Like I would never want you, me, the mayor, a next mayor, anybody to be restricting what you're allowed to say. But I think it goes back to that meeting where we had that we were just going to have to just trust each other to get along. And maybe in those instances like I had in the past where I interjected, be like, all right, you've done it too. Like let's take a moment, let's calm it down and give you, and give all of us a second to like reel it in, take a moment to think and then proceed. So you may get a few of those interjected at anybody who gets too passionate, myself included. So that's my thing. I understand both sides of this, but I would go on the more of the side of caution and not restrict anybody's rights. With that being said, with the immense amount of trust that nobody's going to overstep that bound, including myself.
Fred?
The, the very first topic y'all discussed tonight, which Dave brought up, I, I could have made this same comment there and I almost did. And you know, it's not ironic, but I, I will say it because it's applicable to both things. When citizens come forth and make comments, you, you don't know what they're even going to talk about. I mean, I, I have to be, tell you honestly, frequently I sit there for two thirds of their presentation and I, I don't know what they're talking about. They don't, they don't present it in a way that I immediately understand. I'm here to talk about topic A and my opposition to topic A. They don't do that. None of them do. They don't do it anywhere. They talk and they're passionate about things. And the, the reason I'm explaining it this way is that what y'all do as a group is you sit there patiently and give the citizen the courtesy of explaining why they're, they're talking to their elected officials. And for the most part, you give them the, the ample room that they need to explain what's on their mind. Okay? At, at times, there has been a desire to quickly cut somebody off if it's perceived as a, an attack on someone. When it's directed at me, I may not like it. I'll tell you that quite honestly. I probably don't like it. I probably like to say lots of things, but I don't. I simply listen to the comment and take it in as much stride as I can. But y'all extend that courtesy to citizens because you're trying to understand why they're there talking to their elected officials. Okay? Having said that, in this discussion, in, in my opinion, y'all bring in other things and you often use examples. And the examples to me. And the examples, to me, always seem to complicate things further. Because you're now using a specific example. It may be very enlightening, but when you bring in the other examples, you're not focusing on the core thing. So that's just an observation. I've seen that the whole time during my tenure here in Bel Air Beach. The issue of trust, I find that extremely interesting. That was brought up by several of you and you've discussed that. Because that, in some ways, is what it really comes down to, is trust. And there are times, the better action as an elected official or a city manager or a city attorney is to sit here and say nothing or to thank them for their comments and move on. There's plenty of times, again, if it was something that had to do with me or my scope, I could give the person an absolute broadside, but that's not the time to do it. And, you know, just because it says you may do this, to me, doesn't mean that that was the best time to do it. So, you know, I told you before, in the upper city I've worked with, there's no prohibition related to prospective litigation. And as a matter of course, when something comes up that I think they're vulnerable with about, that is really related to the elected officials, I go talk to all of them about it and say, "This is what..." "As your lawyer, I'm here to talk to you about an area that I think is potentially problematic from a legal standpoint and here's why." And I have, in that city, five different conversations. I say that the same thing five times. I don't share the comments from the five individuals. They're compartmentalized discussions and that's it. But then the elected officials know about the issue and there's never a need to discuss it in a public forum. So, you know, I have great misgivings about discussing some things in a public forum because you simply undermine your own strategy if you do it. And I'm using strategy instead of admissions against interest. That's another concern of mine. But, you know, if there's a, something that's a strategic type decision, that is not, the public forum is really not the place for most of those type of decisions. Or some of them. I won't say most, some of them. But I just want to point out, regardless of how you do it, just because you allow somebody to do it, doesn't mean you as the elected officials should do it. There's plenty of times, the better course of action is to not have a discussion in a public forum. So circle it all the way back to, you know, this is at hand. I did think it would be beneficial and y'all are having a very good discussion about it. So I'm still hopeful and I know several of y'all have not commented. So I'll leave it to y'all at this point.
Fred, you know, I agree with you that just because you can say it, doesn't mean you have to say it. But that's an individual decision. You always have that prerogative here. You know, you hear stuff, you can let it fly. You can comment. You could just do whatever you want to do. We have to trust the elected officials that they're going to do what's best for the city. You know, we just heard Dave say, he thought he was doing the best for the city. And on the same issue, I said, "I think I'm doing best for the city." Who's right and wrong? Maybe neither of us. Maybe we both think we're doing best for the city, okay? But I'm going to draw the line when you say... And I want, by the way, I'm not advocating that the citizens not be allowed to speak. The citizens should be allowed to speak. This is their opportunity to come forward and let us know they like or dislike what's happening. Litigation, prospective litigation, what are you guys thinking? How come you didn't control such and such? That's, they should be allowed to do that. But to say, "We can't talk about it in the same forum"? You've got mismatch over here. And the reason why we can't do it is because declarations against interest? When we're hearing, "Well, we've got insurance policy to cover all that." Well, there goes your financial argument. So what's the other reason? Not to let your elected officials speak? This is in North Korea. This is Bel Air Beach. And you just can't do that, okay? So my proposal, and really, this is very simple. This already passed first reading as amended and it wasn't a significant amendment to the point that we needed to re-read it. So it's passed First Amendment, first reading. We're on second reading. It goes as it was, as amended. We have to decide, council, we're going to do that. Or I'm throwing at you the option of saying, you go back to first reading, okay? And what I think is constitutional... Hey, don't listen to me. Listen to your city attorney, okay? The city council may just, this is the ordinance, okay? It's real simple. 2-63D now becomes, "The city council may discuss current prospective litigation provided that the city attorney has first devised the city council concerning admissions against interest and other legal safeguards, period." You don't even have to talk about the state law that allows sunshine discussions, but you certainly can do that if you want. Obviously, nobody should just be discussing legal strategy and settlement negotiations. That's what the whole shade provision is for that state statute. That should never be discussed in public. And there's, we don't have to pass anything. We've already been granted that right. But this takes care of prospective litigation. So if somebody slips and falls and says, "I'm going to sue you", we say, "Hey, wait a minute. Lynn, come on. We're only asking for a thousand dollars. Let's just take care of that one or turn that one over to the insurance company." You know, and we could have a discussion about it, how to avoid something. Or, gee, have we fixed such and such a condition? Again, subject to your, maybe we don't want to discuss any of that stuff. Subject to the city attorney saying, "You know, maybe you don't want to talk about fixing the condition." Even though that's not evitatory. So, you know, it gets complicated. We listen to our city attorney. We stay out of trouble. But it gives us the option to speak. And if somebody up here wants to get here and just bury the city, that's their prerogative too. The election comes up, you kiss him goodbye, poor her goodbye. That's my proposal. If you're happy with it the way it is, bring it up. I mean, we don't even have to do anything tonight. This is the alternative proposal. But if we're, there's no point in doing an advertisement and a second reading if people hear what I had to say and what Fred had to say tonight. If you want to go forward with the one as amended last time, we're on second reading and it'll come up in November and it may pass or it may fail. We'll bring the same discussion up on that one before we take a vote.
Thank you, but no. I, my belief is we should move forward with the second reading as we amended it the first time. I see no upside to this for the city or for the residents. I spoke with the Florida League of Cities attorney who's representing the city in these other lawsuits. And his warning was very specific that most attorneys, including municipal attorneys, don't quite understand the complexities of admissions against interest. And at the end of the day, the only people who decide admissions against interest is a judge and a jury. And his bottom line was, "Don't do this. There's no upside to it." So especially given the existing context, like I think Gabe was hinting at, I believe this is not in our best interest. And my proposal was to move forward with the second reading as we amended it the first time.
My concern is, you know, from what Fred said, no other city that he found has this. So why are we... I mean, I don't think we're the pioneers of, you know, city litigation and provisions and stuff. And we're... So my question is, is sometimes too much overkill? And you get us into more trouble than less? You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, to me, I'd like to go with what Fred thinks. And Fred thinks that we're doing what's constitutionally, free speech, whatever, right by going to the second reading and let's go. But he's telling me no other city has this provision. So Fred is like, why are we... It seems like he's getting in trouble.
I did some looking around at other cities' codes and they're very smart about how they did it. They did not put it in writing, any rules. All they say is, "The council may set any rules they see fit." In that way, other than the normal code, if they say, if they agree as a body, "We're not going to do this", well, then they pass it. And it's not in writing anywhere and they all agree. Whether they disagree or not, they agree and then that's now the rules they follow. I don't see us doing that, but that's what I'm finding in other cities' codes.
And does anything do that on the fly? If an issue comes before and they decide whether it's going to be spoken about?
I have no idea.
Because I don't understand how they do that and wind up with any kind of semblance of consistency and stay within constitutional parameters.
Technically, they all agree to it and that kind of is written, even if it's just public record on the file. So, I mean, it's always written. That's one thing bad about public service. It's always written down at some point.
Well, we've seen in this code of ordinance is that there's been multiple, multiple sections have been violated, repeated and overturned. We don't even follow our own rules. I don't have a good answer for this.
I'm just trying to find a middle ground compromise where we don't violate anybody's rights, but we also don't get ourselves in a huff or... So I don't know what that is, but I'm always about the compromise. So Fred, what would you suggest is the compromise? And I'm so sorry to put you and make you help me decide, but what is a good compromise? Where we're not infringing on anybody's right to speak, but we're also not going to put the city at harm? Or is there one? That's not a good answer.
Why you make the big bucks, Fred, the tough questions?
As I said earlier, you're two polar positions and how you find a middle ground with two polar positions is extremely difficult. So I will tell you, I don't know that I have a magic bullet that does that. I really don't think I do. One, I'll give you one idea. Delete the whole section. And if you delete the whole section, then you don't have a prohibition. And if somebody steps to the, a citizen steps up and starts talking about litigation and the council members engage in a discussion about it, that may be, lead to problematic results. But it won't lead to a constitutional law issue. And the thing, if you deleted this provision, this provision was deleted right now and the next time you met, somebody came in and started talking about this prospective litigation thing, I would dutifully raise my hand and suggest that the council needs to tread carefully and would be best served in all likelihood in not discussing this in a public forum. The problem with that, I hate to say it, I've said stuff like that before and y'all discuss it anyway. And the temptation is there and it's something that you feel strongly about and y'all want to talk about it. I understand that. But I again say, sometimes you have to temper things. I mean, believe me, there have been many things I really wanted to give you my thoughts on, but I don't because it's not the best place to do it. So if you want a middle ground, delete subsection D and don't have any provision. And that way, there's no prohibition and you would take things on a ad hoc basis as they occur. I mean, the thing I would say to any city council is, be mindful of what you're doing and the potential for doing or saying things that may put you in a worse position. And that, to me, sound legal advice. Whether it be heated, I have no idea.
And I appreciate that.
Right. Glenn's good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good. Good. Go ahead. Finish it in Glenn. Go ahead. Glenn, you're a lot of obvious matters.
I know. I was just going to say that, and I'm just going to say it like it is. This is all directed at Mayor Joe. This is 100% directed at him. And it's fine because that's currently where it is. But my fear is, what happens if in three months it's directed at Glenn? And now Glenn would be the one affected by this, or me? What happens if my rights would be affected by this? So we can't just think, okay, how are we going to control one person? We need to think how this control can be used on you in the future, me, anybody? And so we have to stop making, I'm just thinking of this when he was talking about it. We need to stop making this personal. We need to make this general. And we need to make this, because this would stand maybe for the next 10 years. So this is going to affect the council way after we're done, you know, being on here. So my thing is, do I agree that the mayor gets heated and sometimes I feel like sometimes he's going to step over the lines? Absolutely. Do I feel like sometimes Glenn has stepped that or myself or any of us? Not unless she hasn't been around in this council. I'm going to have to get there, but you may. But so my thing is not, I'm trying not to think personal. I'm trying to think big. And I would not want your rights, Glenn, Dave, Joe, plus me, to ever be affected. So I'm going to try to go on the goal, meet in the middle. You just have to trust us. You have it. And Glenn trusts me. It's hard trusting some of these people in here. But I'm taking that step forward to trust and I expect all of you to do it as well. With that being said, he's going to throw up, you know, the yellow card and say, "You warned." And at some point, one of us is going to have to step in and be like, "All right, you're about to get a regard. You need to stop before it gets really out of hand." So we maybe need to police each other more or decide just, "Let's not get into that slippery slope and just not engage at all."
So the suggestion to take this thing entirely off the table, that's absurd to me. You're talking about the Wild, Wild West and absolutely no restrictions whatsoever. By your own admission, you just said, "I give a warning" and then you guys talk about it anyway. So that's precisely what we're trying to say here is, take it completely off the table. You don't talk about it. I mean, you don't talk about pending litigation. You take prospective litigation off the table. You take it entirely off the table. No warning, just like by your own admission, you talk about it anyway. No, let's not go there.
I agree. But I think we need all to do it for the citizens. They can't go there either.
Taking it off.
It has to be.
Eliminating this, eliminating this makes it like any other topic. People are free to speak about it. Again, I began this by saying, I'm going to use this as a Mr. Athan Dulos, who I admire very much. Okay, he kind of nailed the city to the wall. And he didn't. He exercised supreme restraint. Quote one of my favorite movies, "I'm trying, Regal. I'm trying here." "I'm trying to exercise restraint." You see, it's unconstitutional. Robin just told you what it's all about. No, I don't think people in 1999 knew I was going to be the mayor, but I've been wrong by this twice. And how many more we want me to do, get you over the head with it? Your city attorney agrees with me. It won't withstand strict scrutiny. You don't care when your city manager goes out and speaks in the newspaper, makes declarations against this city's interest. There's no policy that he can't speak on pending litigation or any of our employees. Which, by the way, that would be a constitutional law. That would be constitutional. You can restrict what your employees say, but you can't restrict what your elected officials say. And Robin's right. I might be here for three more months. I might be here for three more years, but there's going to be somebody else in this chair and it could be any one of you. And it's not just the mayor that's affected by this. It's every council member. You're an elected official. How dare the city of Bel Air Beach attempt to limit its free speech of its elected officials? If Glenn Gunn thinks that's okay, with all due respect, my guess is you will be on the losing side of that argument if it's taken before a federal court. If you want to be on the losing side of that argument, as I said to Fred Riley, let's try it then. Because I'll fight this battle if I have to. Not for myself. I'll give every damn penny I make to charity. But I'll fight this because you will not trample elected officials' rights. The reason other cities don't have this is because it's wrong. Wake up, Bel Air Beach. Wake up while you still can. I'm counting on this council not to reaffirm this piece of garbage that was made in 1999 by a council that probably had bad information. Now we've got good information, constitutionally valid information. I'm counting on this council to rise up and say, "No, he just gave you a solution. Just get rid of it." Citizens can come here and speak about it. We have the option of speaking back within the rules. We're not supposed to have a dialogue, but when we get to the end of the night, we could speak back if we want and correct any wrongs that they said if we wish to. City attorney can give us a warning, say, "Hey, watch what you say. Don't go too far." I could hold a press conference tomorrow and bury the city on pending litigation. So could any one of you. Somebody already did. So guess what? You don't have restrictions. You can't restrict... I don't lose my rights if I come in here. Neither do you. Citizen can come up here... Citizen can come up here and speak about it and so can we. And I'm telling you, if you have any other arrangement, you sell that one. For money? When you just told me that, well, partly the cities is going to pay for it. By the way, you got litigation counsel? Did litigation counsel counsel each person every time there's a lawsuit? Because that's standard practice? And say, "You know what, don't talk to anybody about this lawsuit. Don't do a newspaper interview." If they ask you the proper comment, it's no comment. Or like somebody said, "I want justice done, can't go wrong with that." That's what you want to say, okay? Do what you want to do. I do want to move this forward, it's 8:30, so I guess at this point, we can have any final comments, but then we kind of need to know, we're going to bring this forward for a second vote as is? Do we wish for Fred to amend it at all? Or do we wish to pull it out entirely and just table it forever? This isn't a binding vote, so we can do whatever we want to do, but we need a consensus on what we're going to do. That's why this was tabled to begin with. It can die a table of death forever, so, you know, it's up to us. I'll hear from each person, everybody knows where I stand. I don't care whether we kill it for good or change it the way I suggested, either one has the same effect.
They say change it or kill it just to protect all of us in the future. It has not, I'm, trust me, like Dave, I told you, I'm with you, I have the same trust, I have the same fear. My anxiety gets riled up the same way. And I'm not thinking about one person, or I'm not even thinking about this council, I'm thinking about the future. Decisions you make today affect the future and I'm just looking ahead.
Leslie, any comments?
No.
Dave and Glenn, can that work? If you want to talk, you don't have to.
I'll make one more comment.
Dave has, just as soon as they should, I'll go Dave, Glenn and Neil. Yeah, Dave has the floor, I think.
I have to be honest with you, I feel like we're backed into a corner. I feel like we are being threatened. And that's what I heard, is that change this or others.
Not necessarily.
And, I mean, the writing's on the wall. As much as I want to, I want what's best for the city, but I don't see, I don't see a good win either way. I see one way, we're jeopardized, we're, we're, we're in danger for saying the wrong thing at any given time. This council loves to say, "Let's have a back and forth conversation with every topic that comes up, puts us in jeopardy." And on the other hand, do it or else, which is pretty much what I'm hearing, or else something bad will happen in court. That's not a good solution either. I'm hurting for the city right now. I'm hurting for what we're facing, for something that's been in place for 20 years and never been challenged until now. I'm heartbroken. I don't see a way to win this argument. I see no way out of this except for concede.
Your next comment, when you finish this.
One possibility, Dave, is to take this completely off the table and afterwards, we kill it.
It's already off the table, so it's just a matter of not bringing it back.
That's what I'm saying, Dave. And it's not our, we have defended it, we have changed it, we let the existing ordinance stand. And if there's a challenge or concern about it, it's with those six people you met off the line, it's not on this council.
It's with the city. It has nothing to do with those six people, nobody has individual liability for a bill that they pass.
But I guess the point is, and the elephant in the room is people being named in federal lawsuits. Okay, that's the elephant walking around the room here. And that's the concern, and I think that we're stirring those issues here. It's clouding our judgment and so many issues coming before this council that we can't even have intelligent conversations because things get turned around or there's a lecture involved or a veil trimmed of some sort. So, what I'm saying is, is kill it, let the existing ordinance stand and it can be dealt with. We have that.
It's fine, that's your prerogative. Let me clarify what I said, because apparently, it wasn't clear enough, but I thought it was crystal clear. The damage has already been done. You cannot put the genie back in the bottle. The question is, where do we go? I said it again, now, if I said it before, I'll say it again. Mr. Athan Dulos used his particular situation, the damage was done. Then if the city manager pulled aside, the damage was done. And he used it as a learning moment for the city. And I think we have learned, we came up with a 30-page, uh, summary in some response to it and we suspended it. So, the question is, are we going to learn anything as a city? Are we going to go forward saying, gee, what a bunch of people did in 1999, let's just keep going with that? If that's where you want to go with it, go with it. I'm not saying what I'm going to do, I'm not saying what the next person is going to do. You should be jumping up and down, screaming your lungs out, that somebody wants to stop an elected official's free speech. That's purely what this is. We don't like what you're saying, it might cost our city some money, we'll stop your speech. But city manager, go ahead, say whatever you want to the press. We have no rules or regulations on you. What you said is really responsible. No, it's not. It's worse than anything we've ever said here on this desk. There's no regulations whatsoever. So, in one hand, you talk about talking out of both sides of your mouth. On one hand, we say, well, we're concerned about the city's potential liability. In the meantime, we let our employees go out and say whatever they hell they want.
That's not a point of order, just because you're directing that energy towards the city manager.
Directing it, it has nothing to do with what we're discussing. Has everything to do with it, Dave. There was a declaration against interest on this very topic.
That's not, this is not...
Okay, I'd like a point of order. I'd like to make a comment.
Wait a minute, if you're calling, first off, he's made a point of order.
Well, Glenn was just talking to me and it was, I couldn't hear what he was saying.
Okay.
It was not in the sunshine.
Let me rule on his point of order. There's nothing wrong with me saying the city manager said something in the newspaper. It's right here, if you'd like to read it, I'll read it into the record. He said, "In my legal opinion, it's a direct violation of everything we're trying to stop here, which is a direct declaration against this city's interest." He spoke about an active lawsuit and he gave his legal opinion. He's not an attorney and he doesn't, well, he does represent the city, but he doesn't represent the city legally. And he said that something was permissible. His facts are wrong and his law is wrong. That's what I base my thing on, okay? I'm not here to pick on Glenn, I'm just saying, you're permitting, you're saying, well, you're elected. It seems like the only people who can talk about a lawsuit are the elected officials. Our city clerk, if she wanted to, could talk about it. Hell, the DPW people could call a press conference and talk about it. The citizens surely can do it. But the mayor, oh no, he knows a little bit about law, we don't want him saying anything. Well, it's not going to be the mayor next time, it's going to be your council member or your vice mayor or whomever. I'm telling you, it's unconstitutional. You want to sit here and say, "We're going to continue to go with it," go with it. Go with it, it's not a threat. The damage has been done, even if you fix it, the damage has been done. The question is, where do we go from here? Do we learn from our mistakes as a city? We didn't make this mistake. But now you know, now you know it's wrong. You heard it from your city attorney. He told you, it doesn't withstand strict scrutiny. Go back and listen to the last council session. Before he ever came to that conclusion, I read you the rule, Patty put it in verbatim. I asked her to put it in verbatim, what the rule of strict scrutiny was. I knew what it was, because I had done some research on it. And again, nobody challenged it in 20 years. Who was our attorney for 20 years? And I've said, okay? This guy has given it to you correctly. You want to listen to him, listen to him. He, like he said, sometimes he gives us stuff, we don't listen. And we get ourselves in control. I'm trying to stop you from stopping political free speech in the city. You can't do it, ever. And that's exactly what this does. Citizens come and talk about the lawsuit, city manager go and talk about the lawsuit. Elected officials, no, better not say anything. We can shut you down, no you can't. No you can't. And no one will shut me down as an elected official, no one.
Can we hear what Fred is going to say?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
The first thing I'll say is, I've made it clear to y'all before, I'm not the referee. So, in order for y'all to have a discussion about things, you need to have a discussion and don't count on me to step in and separate people. If that's what you want, stop the meeting on this topic and talk about that and tell me that's what you want to do, because I will be resigning tonight if that's what we want. Because I'm not doing that, that's not my role. Having said that, one of the things that is completely troubling about this whole situation with me is I look at standing and you don't have a prohibition against a citizen talking about an issue, okay? So, because there's no prohibition, the citizen can talk about it. Their rights are not infringed in any way, shape or form, they have the ability to speak freely about something, okay? If there is a lawsuit coming out of the current provision or a future provision, the people withstanding are the city council members. That's who has the ability to initiate a lawsuit. A citizen does not have the ability to initiate a lawsuit to vindicate your rights. That's up to one of y'all. Having said that, I have never been in a situation, working on a team with people, where the most concerning people I'm working with are the people on my side of the table. Just saying it as honestly as I can tell you. And in this situation, that's what I have thought through. I can't tell you how many hours I've spent thinking about how to find a solution to this problem. And normally, a lawyer in my position advising the seven of you shouldn't have to be that concerned about one of the seven being the plaintiff in a federal lawsuit. Just telling you. The counter to that, and this is now me, I will say what will seem to some people to be an inconsistent statement, it's not, but you'll have political free speech rights as well and those should not be infringed. So, you're trying to find a way to ensure that people's political free speech rights are allowed and they have the right to express their thoughts. And on the other hand, you're trying to work with people and the biggest conflict or the biggest problem I've had in my tenure here is there is extremely deep conflict among the seven elected officials. And I have been unable to bridge the gap on that. Try as I might, try as y'all discussed it numerous times. I hope there's a solution to this. And I'll go back to Robin, ask me the question, what is the middle ground suggestion? It's delete subsection D. And then in the future, everybody rely on their better angels and not take the bait when something comes forward and use discretion and use it wisely. And that's, to me, the best thing that I can suggest to you. Because that is really the only middle ground solution I can come up with.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Yeah, works for Leslie.
It sounds, I think it's the smartest thing to do, personal feelings aside, just law, First Amendment rights. If you're not going to make them not come up and talk about the lawsuit, then you can't make us not talk about the lawsuit. Because if you're infringing on their rights if you tell them no, you're infringing on my right, you tell me no. I'm not in any lawsuit. I certainly can talk about it and I could probably get into hot water for the city too. I'm not going to, because I'm going to show restraint, okay? This is a personal thing. I feel like so many issues we bring up on this council is personal. It's not city business, it's personal business. I don't like this guy, I don't like this girl, so I'm going to attack him with this. And let's make the ordinance to make his life or her life miserable. Get the stupid personal feelings out of this politics. Think that's wrong with the whole country in politics, it's personal. It's not personal, it's business, okay? I don't have to be friends with any of you. I would not be friends with any of you, I like all of you. But my whole point is, Dave, you and I butt heads on something, I still think you're a great person and after we're not elected officials, I hope we can hang out. Same with you, all of you, what, all of you? I have no lasting personal grievances. I've argued with all of you and it's been actually fun to hear your personal views versus mine and come to the middle. So, I'm saying, I'm going with Fred on this. I do not think he needs to be the referee. I've never seen him wear stripes once, don't ever wear stripes, because we'll make you referee. So, he shouldn't have to be our babysitter. And right now, I feel like we are expecting him to go put us in the corner and timeout. And that's ridiculous. So, what's going to end up happening, and it's going to be all our faults, is he's going to finally decide to leave us, which I would blame him in a bit. And then we are going to be so screwed compared to this. So, I think that we should just buck up, be men, be women, pull up our big girl, big boy panties and just get the personal out of this and just do what's right constitutionally for us currently and for the next councils going forward. So, I'm going with Fred and his legal advice, which has always been good, and saying, get rid of this, it gets rid of the problem.
And that's three people want to get rid of it. The other two folks here, Dave and Glenn, any comments? I mean, Glenn already said he didn't want to get rid of it. Leave it intact, right, there was your comment? Was it changed?
I think the fallback position is you stay with the existing ordinance.
So, your saying is keep it as is, and Dave?
I'm going to have to disagree. I don't see any good way out of this. I feel like that we are going to be, we are going to be having to defend this decision. And I have no choice but to feel that way. I feel threatened by individuals in this room. And I feel like that I am being forced into doing something that I know is probably not in the best interest for at least this city council.
No one's forcing you to anything, you should vote your conscience. Whether you pass this, change it, repeal it, leave the existing one intact, doesn't change a thing. It's just a question of, has the city learned anything from this episode? The episode has happened already. Now, the question is, what's going to happen going forward? Are we going to say, yeah, it happened, go ahead, sue me? That's what I'm hearing from one person here. Or other people are saying, get rid of this thing. No other cities have it for a good reason. Hey, no, it's unconstitutional. It's not like we're some great, you know, visionary, we're not. This was bad law when it started, it wasn't our law. And so, no one's forcing you. On what is this, we got three people who want to kill it. Let's promote you to repeal this on the next agenda. And if somebody wants to, can we have...
No, you can't do it that way.
No?
No. It's scheduled for cycle reading. It was continued to...
It's tailed right now, it doesn't have to be brought back. It can be tailed for a writ of re...
But you'll need to address that at the next city council meeting.
Okay, so then a motion can come up to kill it, basically, we'll have this discussion all over in general session.
But if it's on the agenda for the next city council meeting and all seven people are here, then you should decide what to do next.
Okay. Unfortunately, we don't come up with really a binding consensus, because we can't, so...
You can't anyway.
Okay, but we know we're...
We can't really think here, but that's... I mean, you've done what I asked, so I can tell you, I'm extremely appreciative because...
It was a good discussion.
It was a discussion that needed to be had.
Fair enough. Anybody, we didn't ask the citizens, there's two people left. Does anybody? Nothing? Okay.
So, what will be the agenda of the...
Agenda will be second reading. It goes to second reading and then there is, at this point, there's three people who feel that this should be repealed and the motion would be to, a counter motion to repeal it. But now we get into an issue of reading, so all we can do is kill it, we can't, we can't do a repeal.
But wouldn't go forward, you repeal, just not be passing the amendment.
That's correct.
It just goes back to the old one.
Well, then sticking with the old one, that's different than repeal.
That's what I said, we haven't passed this thing yet.
Right, but what we're saying is the one that we, at least some of us are saying, the one that we currently have is a big problem. So, Fred's proposal was get rid of it. So, we can't, if somebody made an alternative motion saying, "I motion to get rid of this thing," So, we can't, if somebody made an alternative motion saying, I motion to get rid of this thing, I don't think at that point, we have done a proper advertisement for eliminating a...
No, if you go to second reading, and it does not pass on second reading, the ordinance which contains the amendment simply fails. At that point, if there was a desire on the city council's part to delete subsection D, then we would create a new ordinance. And the new ordinance, I would recommend to you, would go through a workshop, because it's a better place to have the initial discussion. And then if it got out of the workshop, then it would go to two readings before the city council. That's how you make amendments to the ordinance, or to the code. You have to have two readings.
So this discussion tonight...
Doing that route would be absolutely clean.
We didn't accomplish anything that tonight. We didn't accomplish anything today, because we just had this discussion.
No, but you had to have the discussion. Otherwise, you know, I mean, you've been at it for probably an hour plus. And, I mean, again, I had hoped there would be a good compromise. I don't know what that would be.
We have a three to two compromise, but, you know, the question is, I mean, this should...
You can't go ahead immediately. You have to follow these steps that I've outlined. That's where you're at.
Three people have, three out of five have indicated that they want the ordinance repealed in its entirety. We have...
No. Repeal the original one?
Yeah, that's what he said, repeal the original, that was his compromise.
No, I said delete, delete subsection D.
Right, delete subsection D, which is, the presiding officer, on request of the city council, shall rule out or any discussion by the city council of matters that are the subject of any pending or prospective litigation, except that the council may discuss pending litigation in accordance with section 286. Well, that's not the current, that's, that's not the current. Current just stops there, it's out of order, period.
But on second reading, which is, this was the interim step that you agreed to do when you continued it. Second reading should be at the next city council meeting. And because of the title, it is still, the amendment is going to be consistent with the title. And that does not contemplate at this moment in time that you are deleting it. It's commonplace, you're passing an amendment to it.
So we would have to vote down the amendment at the second reading, and then come back and discuss...
That's what I would recommend to do.
Repealing, or changing, or whatnot, or deleting.
And then some other fashion, right?
If you were at first reading, it would be different with that coming up. But you're not, before he passed that.
Okay, so then it goes back for final, as the way you said?
Second reading.
Or second reading? With the understanding that we have. So we'll have this debate again, twice probably. We'll have it at the next council meeting, and then we'll have it at a work session, and...
And I'm sorry I wasted your time, but...
I mean, I just don't know what we accomplished, because quite frankly, we could have, I mean, I understand you wanted the discussion, but if it was gonna go to a second reading, we could have just had that discussion at the second reading. It's not your fault, but I'm just saying...
No, you guys asked, you did what I asked you to do.
I would prefer to have this conversation tonight, rather than during that meeting.
Yes, I agree. And then we may, of course, say things you already said tonight, if you have two more present. Save a lot of time.
If I had a crystal ball and knew what everybody was gonna say, then I wouldn't have put you through the ordeal. But I don't, and I thought it was the best effort I could to try and find a way to solve the problem.
Okay. Anybody, we're now on three hours with no end in sight here. We still have, Leslie needs a timeout, so it's eight fifty-four. How much time we need, ten minutes? Nine oh five, or thereabouts, nine oh five, okay? All right, it's nine oh five now. I note that we have seven items here, and we're just getting to item number three. How late does this council wanna go? And do we wanna prioritize what we wanna go to? I don't think a one o'clock meeting for a work session is in order, so Glenn shaking his head. Do we have certain ones that we wanna prioritize? I know, like, the buoys was an issue, but this might go quickly, but Frank's the expert, he's not available, so... I don't know. You know, these are long discussions, almost everything here, so...
The issue was really, we just needed to decide which version...
I could get through that quickly, if I don't try and...
We could do that quickly.
But I can tell you number four is probably, I have something to say about that. Number six is wild, and I have no idea what that is. Five may have some discussion. So, we can pick a time, and we'll just keep going, or we can prioritize what we have left. I'm totally open for what everybody wants to do.
I'd vote for...
Turning my call.
I'd vote for cutting it off at about ten o'clock.
At an hour, okay. So, of the, anybody else? Ten, ten fair, I think ten is fair. Robin's gonna get a park at my time then, if we stay anywhere.
They have problems.
Any order that you want me to pick these in? I think we could, Dave's right, I think we could take care of three fairly quickly. Because I was the one that asked, had some issues with that one, to invite back here. So I can get through three quickly, and then maybe we'll just pick the next item, how's that? Okay, so three. Discussion ordinance twenty-one oh nine, amending section thirty dash one forty-one Gulf Mexico Safety Zone. Let me clarify this, because I understand some comments that I heard last time. Maybe my comments weren't interpreted properly. In no way, shape, or form, I advocating that motorized vehicles be allowed in swim areas, period. Not gonna be allowed, okay? Sorry, I only gave the example, we were talking about Dave, and I said, he might be responsible, but the next guy with the keg of beer isn't, and I don't want motorized vehicles. This was a real simple thing, and I was trying to elicit some response. Right now, Fred has this written, it basically prohibits all vessels. And I think we kinda got through that, and said, it's basically pretty much everything, okay? You probably could have a raft, or a tube, or a, you know, a little floaty, but you're not gonna have anything more than that. My point was, do you want to have anything more than that? You can't put your paddleboard out here, you can't put your kayak out. These are self-propelled items, they're not wind-propelled, they're self-propelled. Do we want to allow people with an oar, or a paddle, to put something in the water? Do we want more than that? Or do we want to say, nothing is allowed? And I got very little response from everybody, so it's really, it's either good the way it's written, or we allow very limited amounts of propulsion, okay? Hand propulsion. I have Leslie, I have Robin, and then you, so that's the order, Leslie's up.
My inclination would be to allow, you know, human-propelled...
Paddles.
Paddles, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, things like that, rafts. I mean, one of the things they need to find a vessel is a raft, give me a break, or inner tube. I also, I'm not in favor of allowing, of prohibiting all motorized vessels in there. I think the no-wake zone is a more appropriate, you know, rule, because people come in to bring their boats in to pick up the family that's on the beach, and go out. But if it's a no-wake zone, that works. That's my thought on that.
Robin?
I'm with Leslie, because I know my husband, and Dave, you said you've done it where you go and you pick up the family, and, you know, then take them off. We've done that with my males when they've been in town. Do I agree that some drunk is gonna take advantage of it? Yes, but truth is, even if we had zero motorized powered in there, that drunk is still gonna take advantage of it, so let's not harm the people that are gonna do it responsibly. So I'm with Leslie, I think, human-powered, but in no-wake zone for the motorized. But then a citizen brought up that, it's not kite, well, kitesurfing, and then the other one with the sail...
Wind, you kind of...
Hyperfoil, is that what it is?
Yeah, the foil.
The foil. That's kind of a gray area, because those can be very dangerous. I've seen the windsurfers go, and they, if they don't have control of that, and are really good at it, so I don't know if we can maybe limit them.
I think that wording manually-propelled vessels, Chris.
Except that now we're talking, I mean, where I guess I part company is that now we're talking about motorized. That's where, I mean, I'm totally, I have no problem with self-propelled vessels. Taking out wind, because guys who are really good at windsurfing can fly. Thank you, so I don't like that. Because if you're swimming there, and somebody loses control, you're dead.
I think manually-propelled would be with a paddle, right?
But I'm with you, just manual, just leave it at that. I can't endorse... Maybe if we could put a zone, where is a pickup zone? We could somehow section that zone off where you come in in a certain spot, as pickup. And then we could have this, and then you know, like, don't swim in that zone. So, you know, a jet ski or a boater can come in, and no-wake can do it. But you wouldn't swim in that zone. We would have to manually section that off, if at all possible. That would give the best of all things. And then the rest of the beach, swim, and don't worry about getting hit in the head with a... I might be hit in the head with a thirty-four boat, because the guy's picking it up even coasting.
Yeah, but Bella Shore, do they have, they don't have buoys to tell us, so technically, you can come in on your boat. Right now, well, there's nothing to say you can't go in and go with your family.
No, it does, Bella Shore, everything's prohibited.
But is that a buoy? I mean, I'm talking about from the water. I'm not talking about from the beach. So technically, right now, anybody, really, I mean, not saying us that we know, but I'm saying, a tourist from Bella Beach can walk to Bella Shore, and their family can come pick them up.
It's not, you'd still be breaking the law, but it's not, there's no notice.
I was just trying to clarify how you rule out windsurfers and kiteboards, my homes that manually propel. I'm with these guys, I have no objection to a boat coming in, but my preference is toward wording an idle power rather than a wake, no-wake zone. People have different concepts of what no-wake means, and how much power is in it. I'm talking about, if it's an island, just dropped into, and just island speed.
And total exclusion, here's what, here's the potential for that. Someone rents a boat, they take their family out, they want to go to the beach. They see those markers and think, well, everyone get out, well, let's go to the beach from here. So they drop anchor, jump out of the boat, and it's twelve feet deep, and can't swim. I don't know, I'm just saying, there's some...
That's the way it is in a lot of cities.
Opportunities, in every situation, there's, bad things can happen, but what you're doing now is you're restricting anyone from even coming to the beach that happens to have a boat. And I don't see a good solution. I think the idle speed is probably as good as you can get. But then what's gonna keep them from dropping an anchor, right, on the beach?
There are people who anchor their boats out there overnight. I assume living along the beach is a little anchored out there overnight.
I guess I look at it from a swimmer's point of view, and until the red tide came this year, I was a swimmer, and I like to go, you know, swim from here to Indian Rocks, which is a fairly long swim. And I go deep, because I don't wanna be around fishing lines and people and stuff like that. And I've had boats that got too close, and boats scare the hell out of me. I mean, you can't necessarily see me, you know, I'm in the water, I just, my little head is sticking up. And I don't wanna be hit with a twenty-foot boat that I don't speed. I mean, I'll get hit with a kayak, that might give me a bruise, you know, I can deal with that. I'll get hit with a raft, that Leslie's on, I'm cool with that. I'll get hit with a paddleboard, because those guys are standing up, and they have, you know, the worst it's got, but I'm gonna get a little gash in my head, which I don't want, but I can deal with it. It scares the hell out of me with your boat, or your jet ski, or something like that. Forgetting about the irresponsible people, even the responsible people. I just, either we have, I'm just saying, either have a section for it, limit it in a certain area. And all of this comes down to enforcement. I will give you a piece of information I got, because it came up, I think Frank brought it up last time, is there's like no enforcement, because he takes pictures of it all the time. Good news, Lynn's laughing, he knows it, right? Sheriff's just got more patrols for the boats, and they've got, apparently, they've got four full-time officers now that are gonna be patrolling. Unfortunately, the bad news is, they've got four full-time officers, and they've got all the water on the east side here, and all the water on the west side. So, it's not gonna be great, but it got better than what you've got right now. So there will be a little bit more sheriff patrol. I don't know. You know, again, I hate to hurt the responsible boaters, but it's the ones that just aren't paying attention. Getting hit in the head with a boat scares me.
Well, I mean, I agree, it's hard to see a, you know, too bad you don't have a dive flag with you, without a boat. But, I mean, I would be fine with a marked zone for going in and out and dropping off, picking up family. I'd be fine with that, but I'm not fine with zero motorized boats. Just for like, you know, like Dave and my family, who can do it responsibly. So I'm okay with a marked idle.
Could we do a warning zone?
Is that... No, we don't have a marked one.
No, we don't have it, but could we do it? If you said, let's say, nineteen, I'll just pick two streets, you know, twenty to twenty-first street, that block is the, you know, we're gonna put buoys up there that are gonna say, boats are permitted, and that's where you're gonna pick your people up. Can we, and everything else, swim in peace, and don't worry about it. If you come in on, you know, up at twenty, do we have a twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, you're too far. Harrison, you're too far. You come in on this one block, I mean, do we have that many people dropping people off? I don't usually swim out there, so...
I don't throw that you, well, first of all, it'd be very hard with the force.
Oh, this is hard to enforce.
And, you know, we're just trying to correct the wording on our buoys. And I think the realization is that people want to be able to bring their boats in. But I think if you look at B on page three of twelve, the slow speed area, where you gotta be pretty much flat in the water and creep along. I think that's a potential. But, like Rich Shot said in the meeting, whatever you do, you're not gonna stop it.
They do in the stuff from...
Unless you're saying no vessels, then you got that for...
Right.
Section three twenty-seven point four-six is the Florida statute with voting restricted areas. And subsection one-one addresses an ordinance establishing an idle speed, no-wake, voting restricted area if the area is, and then it has a couple different things. None of those include a bathing area, a beach, or a bathing beach or swim area. The reading down further in the statute that says an ordinance establishing a vessel exclusion zone if the area is, A, designated as a public bathing beach or swim area. So, the vessel exclusion zone is the several different categories that I had highlighted in the memo. Those are the options for vessel exclusion zone. So what I'm saying is, no-wake or idle speed is really not...
Not an option.
Not an option.
Idle speed is not an option?
No.
Because it's listed in the, this is so... Uniform waterway markers in Florida waters. It lists idle speed, no-wake, or idle speed means that a vessel must proceed at a speed no greater than that which will maintain steerage and headway.
That's not for a swim area, though, right?
Pardon?
That's not for a swim area or a beach, and that's what Fred was saying.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's like if you're going under a bridge, or... So...
The idle speed, no-wake, voting restricted area if the area is, A, within five hundred feet of any boat ramp, hoist, etc., on waterways more than three hundred feet width, or within three hundred feet of any boat ramp or hoist, marine railway, or other launching system. B, within five hundred feet of fuel pumps. C, inside or within three hundred feet of any lock structure. So, none of those are applicable to a beach.
So basically, Fred, back to what I was thinking initially, manually-propelled vessels, only all vessels other than those propelled by oars, paddles, or poles are prohibited from entering the marked area. That's, that's that.
So, or they're mutually exclusive. I mean, you're trying to, you're trying to create a swim area that allows vessels to come in at idle speed. Maybe you just create an area that has idle speed only, and it's a de facto swim area also.
Well, that's what it sounded like we can't do, is, that wasn't one of our options, right? If it's a beach...
What you do is you designate that you have to mark that area, the beach is a no-swim zone.
See, like...
That's not gonna go over, that's our lock, and that's...
You go, if you go to Clearwater Beach, you know, they go out so far with pumps, they don't use buoys. That's their swim zone, beyond those markers...
don't use buoys, that's their swim zone beyond those, those markers.
Yeah, that's nowhere as close to the beach. I was just there, I swam, that, that's, you're 100 yards from the shore.
Well, that's typically what it is.
Right. So no boats are allowed, period. I mean, not that somebody's not gonna choose to break that wall, but you know, nothing that's swim zone, period. You're not, really not even supposed to. Now, while we were there, that's where we learned about inflatable paddleboards. I didn't even know it was such a thing, but that's like, yeah, we inflated them, you know, like, I didn't care. It was an inflatable paddleboard, he was all off and on it, he was standing on it, nobody was having a problem, but, you know.
So is option, is number three an option?
Yeah. You talking about manually propelled vessels only?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's what I think, that's a compromise, but it still legally allow you to bring any, actually row your boat in, it wouldn't allow you to bring your boat in.
Where are you reading that?
Page 412.
Page 412. I don't see, I don't see a solution for boats if we designate a swim area. I just don't see it.
I mean, unless we did, as you said, but that's, somebody's gonna, citizens will be screaming if you make their boat in a swim zone.
Just turning around, the wind's blowing, those boats are gonna drift into the swim areas. I say we probably go with number three.
Or no vessels at all. I mean, that's basically your choices.
Well, I don't want the novice paddleboard to have to go out beyond those markers to use it.
And you can't get good on the markers unless you launch it, unless you're coming in from, you have to be good already, you know what I'm saying?
Isn't there a clear definition of vessels in this? Because I didn't see it.
Leslie and I were talking.
Do you prefer? Okay.
So, do we have a consensus to move this forward with as page four of 12, item three, manually propelled vessels? Right now, you can't bring anything in, right? I think the way it stands right now is no vessels at all, so we're actually giving a little extra, right? Fred?
Yes, and if you're going, whatever you decide to do, if you're gonna change it from what we have now, then the thing that Lynn and I have done now twice was submitted to the state agency so that they approve it in advance so that we know conclusively if this is what you implement, they will then approve it after the fact and then you're gonna be, it will be legally sound. That's one of the requirements of the statute anyway, but to me, it makes sense to apply it by them before y'all vote on it.
So, if I hear you correctly, before we do this, we're for time, okay? You're not bound by your vote tonight, we can't vote on it, but let's not send these guys for something that we're not really gonna, if you're really gonna vote for this, if it says three, manually propelled vessels only, and we'll task them with going forward. If you absolutely will not vote for that and you wanted to say no vessels at all, then we have something we could vote on right now. So, we kinda need, you know, where each person stands, non-binding of course, but we can't vote on this the way it is if we decide to change it from none, right? That's the way it stands. Right now, they have it set up as no vessels. And if we go to manually propelled only, then you gotta go back to FWC, get the permission, and then we can make sure that we're gonna be okay, and then we can vote on it. Did I say that correctly?
Right. Yeah, we have to send it to them, get their approval, and then we, once they say it's good, then we.
Is that a long process?
Last time, what was?
So, we, okay.
Yeah. Because we had to send it back two times, I think, a couple changes.
I just need clarification. If you, can you create an idle zone?
According to the statute, you cannot create, you cannot create an idle zone and designate a swim area.
That's what Dave was saying, basically, we'd have to, we'd make that beach a non-swim beach, basically.
Well, you're designated a swim area, you swim in a.
At your own risk.
Well, you swim there anyways, your own risk, right?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, if it's, if you're gonna let boats come in, I mean, I'm gonna swim someplace else, I guess most people would. If that's the designated boat area, then, you know, yes, it's a no swim beach, we're not gonna rescue, but.
There's a way you could do this, okay? Today, you have the whole length of the beach as a swim area, okay? You could designate a, and I'm just picking a number, a hundred yard by 300 yard segment of the beach and have that be a manually propelled vessels only. You could then have a hundred yard segment that doesn't have any designation, and then you could have another 400 foot segment that said manually propelled vessels only. So, there would be a place where families could come in and, you know, idle and are dewbox prudent, and there's not going to be a marker that tells them how to do things. I mean, that, that to me makes sense as a solution if you're really concerned about having a way for people to bring a boat to the shore.
So we've got a manually propelled bunch, and then we've got a no wake zone, then we've got manually propelled.
No wake zone's not an option.
Oh, okay. What do you call the one where you can bring your boat in?
No restrictions. There would be no buoys.
No buoys, no restrictions.
Okay.
Yeah, and what I see is potential for an instantaneous three rook or island.
Exactly.
And that's not gonna work.
I'm just, that's the only.
No, and I.
Why you could structure it so legally and it be sound?
And where I see the problem with that is, okay, so who's wonderful beachfront condo are we gonna tell is the boat zone and you're really not supposed to swim there because we'll have however many people they have as residents in this room screaming at us, going, what the hell are you doing? You know, you just killed my beach, because most of them are not boaters, right? Most of them are beachgoers and we're taking away their beach. So, I wanna help the folks who, you know, I mean, it sounds like a nice thing, they're not doing it legally right now, it would be nice to do it, but I mean, the alternative is just keep it the way it is right now and we just ban everything, but I really wanted to try and help the people with the, the oars and the, you know, the people learning how to, you know, paddleboard and stuff like that. But if we can't do that easily, then.
Well, let me suggest another thing that could be done. You could direct us, I mean, we know the no vessel one's already sound, the FWC looked at that. You could direct Lynn and I to change it, and I'm just picking one, to, to change it for manually propelled vessels, and we can send that to FWC and get them to approve that. And if they did that in a week, we could come back and say, you know, next time y'all have a workshop, city council, you have two approve options from FWC, the seven of you now decide which one you want.
We can do that. It won't be the motorized one, but it'll be the two options.
Yeah, option three.
Or we all know we want manually propelled, in which case we could just skip the next workshop. I mean, it seems like, I think Glenn was saying he's okay with manually propelled. We're trying to get the motorized one in as a way of doing it, it doesn't look like there's a way to do it easily.
Well, I'm only saying this because Frank has always been very dialed in and focused and my guess would be, although I'm reluctant to guess what he would want, but the tone of the discussion with him is, he doesn't trust anybody with a boat coming close to the beach at all, so.
Five boat.
A boat. But I don't know that he had a problem with a paddleboard or something like that. I'm saying, we would probably pass manually propelled vessels only if we, if it came before us. So, I'm saying skip the next bring it back to work session, bring it to a vote. If we get manual, if we all good with, if he could get us manually propelled, we're not gonna get power boats, okay? We all tried, but it doesn't look like we're gonna get that. I'm not telling you what to do. You wanna go and bring your powerboat in, you run that risk, but, you know, manually propelled makes it legal for the paddleboarder, it makes it legal for the person with a little raft with a paddle, I mean, and that gets us in and, because I don't think anybody wants to ban everything. Does anybody wanna ban everything? No, right? So, I think it's option three. Fred, I will ask for the citizens if they have any comments? None? Yep?
So if, if you're going out on a boat for years and we pulled it to shore many a times because the dock can be kind of a, I wanna say a hard for some people to get on or off a boat. So, the, the option, if you all can find a way to allow boats in, would be maybe at the far end of Bella Beach where they could, their family members could park at the marina and walk through that easement, and then so that we don't have boats in where, you know, it's at the very end of our city down there, and we have a lane right there at the end of our city for the boats to come in, and they still can pick them up from shore. It's just something I'm doing out there, then you don't have it broken up and it's not confusing where a possible accident could occur. It's a set designated area, not in the middle of all these other areas and make it confusing. That's all I wanted to say.
The situation is still the same thing. I don't know whose condo is the last one in our town, but the minute we say you can't swim, well, you can swim there, but you're gonna have motor, you know, motor boats come through, or this is actually designated a no swim zone, they're not gonna like that.
I also fear that if you allow boats to come all the way up to shore, you're gonna start an epidemic because all of a sudden Bella Beach will be known, that's where you can go, and we'll have, we'll have tons of boats that are, that are all at Bella Beach and nowhere else.
I, I think it's leaning towards number three. Nobody wants to ban it entirely, right? And we get what limited rights we can for manually propelled vessels only? We task Lynn and Fred to go forward with that? Is that, I'm not putting words in everybody's mouth, is that where we're all about?
Yes.
Yes, Robin? Yes, Leslie?
Yes.
Yes, me? Yes, Glenn? Okay, that's what we're going with, if you can get it. Okay? We've got half an hour on our own time limit. What's everybody wanna do next? We've got four, five, six and seven. City manager, you have a preference?
Five is, is really just the only thing that's really changed from what the planning board recommended in the board was we added the electric bicycle, which is at the very top of it.
That's a quick hitter maybe. Does anybody? Okay, that's the one where we're, the electric, the legislature gave us the ability to ban e-bikes on the beach, because originally in their wisdom, they said bicycles and bicycles included, electric vehicle, electric bicycles. So people were coming up and down the beach where it's a danger, and they were zipping up and down, and we all recognized that that was a safety hazard. They see it was docked and outed, everybody. The legislators finally said, okay, legislators finally said, okay, you can ban them on the beach. We're not banning them in the city, we're not banning them on sidewalks, we're not banning them on the streets, just on the beach. So I think that's everything, like, this moves this forward with the ban on the beach. So unless somebody wants it, to allow this, we probably can move forward, but I'm not, that's just me talking, I'm totally in favor of banning them on the beach, they have no place there.
This is actually a countywide movement, all the municipalities and all this time.
And then the other thing that's in there.
Let me just dispose of that one first. Does anybody, we have five people here, anybody in favor of allowing the e-bikes to continue on the beach? I'm seeing no one. Citizens? No one? Okay, so we move forward with the e-bikes then? Is that, we're okay with the ban on the e-bikes to vote on that? We need two, send the ordinance, two readings and publication, hold it?
Well, there's one, two changes that are highlighted in red on page four and six. And this really pertains to vice mayor's comment about, you know, disrepair docks and what have you.
I was fine with this. I just, I don't want my page as a definition, but I'm just sitting here going, well, who decides if it's in a state of disrepair? I mean, I know we can say we know it when we see it, Glenn's nodding, I mean, is a board missing, they, maybe you could trip and hurt yourself. So, what's the standard? You know, that's the only thing, if I look at this, when is, who calls it? You know, I don't want it to be too subjective.
License and service.
Can't hear you.
I said you're not licensed and service.
Right. I mean, and, yeah, whose call makes, who makes this call? I mean, we know the ones like Dave was talking about, the dilapidated ones that are falling in the water, yet clearly no one's gonna disagree, but like, Lynn, our dock on 7th Street actually wasn't structurally sound, it looked great to me, you know? You did the research with the engineers and they're like, no, that's no good, it's gotta come down. I would've been using that thing for 10 years, it looked great, okay? So, you know what I'm saying? I mean, so there's one that visually looked good, but it wasn't, right? So how do you make that determination? Because I don't wanna get that our code officer goes out and says, well, you know, you got, your board is down and you gotta repair it, and the next guy's, you know, it's falling apart underneath and we don't catch it, so, and we can't do engineering studies of everybody. So that's, I'm fine with it if we can just define how we're gonna enforce it. Has to be clear to the citizens.
The, I thought we were covering the page four change, section F.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's concern with boats.
Right. That one, I didn't have, there's no issue. I didn't have an issue with that. I was, I was on page six. I mean, it's open for discussion, I saw four and I'm like, that's fine. I mean.
I thought it was pretty clear.
Yep, it's pretty well defined. I don't know what the marine law is, I mean, if we can write it, but I assume we probably took this from somebody.
Well, what I put in, both page four and page six are comparable provisions that the city of Clearwater uses. So, it's not me making up a standard, it's what somebody else has used and it's a neighboring city with a lot of experience with this type of thing. I would submit to you, this, this is a code enforcement issue, and the code enforcement inspector will have to make a determination whether it's in disrepair or not. If there's, there's a board missing and it's a key board, then it's in disrepair. I mean, the process is to send the people a notice asking them to comply with the code, and if they don't, then it's to send them a notice telling them to come to the code enforcement hearing.
And does et cetera cover boat lifts? It's not called out specifically, but et cetera is left for interpretation.
We have to?
Uh, page six, H, 4H, where it starts with if any dock or pile has.
Et cetera.
I, I would think that that would mean boat lift, but.
Why you just add boat lifts?
It's not called out.
You can add it.
Should it be boat lift and then maybe davits or?
Boat lift and.
Davits.
Not everybody has a lift.
We put boat lift, davit, et cetera. I don't see a great problem. I'm still having a little problem with this for being vague, though. It's not your fault, I'm just looking at this way, somebody who's challenged, so the code guy comes by and says, well, your board is no good, and then I go, well, say, look at, you know, Johnny's down the road and he's got 10 boards missing, it didn't hit him, and we, our code guy is, I mean, he's good, we like him, but he's not a dock expert, it's an engineering thing, not a police, so how do you make this up?
My answer to that would be, when the code officer goes and looks at a house and he's not a structural engineer either, but if there is a dangerous condition that's obvious because the roof is being held up by a two by two, then, you know, most people can assess that a two by two is not gonna be able to hold the roof very long. And, you know, that, that's where they, if it's, if the situation is severe enough, then it's a life safety issue and the code officer has the ability to do something about it and expedite it. If it's a minor thing, then my understanding is they typically would address it as a minor thing. I, I'd never have liked using et cetera in anything in a legal standard, the only reason I used it here is because that's what the city of Clearwater used.
I don't think anybody would have a problem with adding the lifts and davits and to it and then put the et cetera? Anybody?
Well, I would take out et cetera and use ancillary structures because that's really what they're talking about.
That's fine. I mean, Fred, if you're okay with the wording, I just bring it up as a challenge because that's me, but if you think it's sufficiently clear, that's fine. I mean, I don't have a dog in the fight. I mean, I don't have a dog in the fight, it don't matter to me, but I just, I don't want somebody saying, you know, again, you enforced it for him, you didn't enforce it for me, he's got three boards missing, I got one, maybe your board is critical.
Maybe I've been looking at this too long, but you're always going to hear that argument anyway, it doesn't matter what the legal standard is, and they're always going to point to, why didn't you pull that guy over too? And the, the, the object is to get compliance and not to have dangerous situations.
Same with the grass, based tied in one person on the east side or the northern or west side, it's just, they didn't notice that guy down there with the three, but they'll get to him eventually.
Well, I mean, we go back to plain English meaning, it says dangerous structure creating an unreasonable risk. So, you know, if somebody's just busting somebody's chops because a screw is missing, that's not going to fly, that's not a dangerous situation, but, you know, if your railing is missing, then you're going to.
I mean, Dave and I have seen plenty of docks just going out to their intercoastal where it's, it's not a, a screw is, is wholly obvious.
They know who they are.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Everyone.
So that's the only changes that we have?
Uh, page seven, we're needing some numbers of days.
Oh, yeah.
And unfortunately, this is one of those situations where I don't really, I know people that cruise.
Yeah.
And some of them cruise for three days and some of them cruise for three months. And if I had giant boat and big pockets and was retired, I would probably do that too.
Yeah, and I don't want them to have to go through city hall every time they decide to take a cruise, but by same token, if we get guys who that are just parking slips and really not using them, that's the, that's really what this is geared for, is the guy who really just is holding up a slip.
But is he paying for it?
He is, but you know, like, if you're just, if you're just going to bank a slip?
Well, that's.
That's, we got 40 people on waiting list.
No, I agree, it's not fair, but hey, he's paying it. I'd be mad if he was holding it and not paying it.
We're saying put a boat there, you know, basically.
Well, I get it, like, he's paying the bill if he chooses to pay a bill or not.
If he went through the protocol and waited his time on the waiting list and he's paying.
And this whole paragraph comes out then, basically, yeah.
I don't think he should be penalized.
If you want to park it, you can park it for 20 years as long as you're paying the rent.
What happens if it's in repair and it's at the marina getting fixed and they can't find the part or all of that?
That was yearly, like Dave said, how do you pick a number of days because somebody might want to cruise around the islands for six months and I don't want them to have to call Lynn for, hey Lynn, I'm going to go away for three months, you know, it just.
Just pay the rent.
Just pay the rent, so we just take, so we take that paragraph out?
Well, let's, it says, discuss with Lynn Reeves. Lynn?
We, well, here, here's the, just as an example, and this happened to us during the pandemic. We had an individual just before the pandemic, he sold his boat. Well, he went back to England, he's got a condo here, sold his boat, went back to England, couldn't come back. Well, he kept paying for his, his, his slip, he had a lift on it and, you know, we told him to, you need to get rid of the lift. Well, finally he did get rid of the lift and turned the thing in because he decided, I don't want to pay for it anymore. But the other issue is, we've had a couple of people and, and I think we need to have some standard for the, the maintenance is, is more the bigger thing when they take a boat out to get it repaired. I would think that in most cases, the maintenance place is going to tell you how long it's going to take to get repaired. So if we established a reasonable time length, that's, that's what we need to do.
I got to say, I believe, I agree with Glenn on this one. If you're paying the bill, who cares what you're doing with it? I mean, you know, I, I know it's not right, if I'm sitting here and I'm on that waiting list and I'm seeing a guy just banking a slip, but maybe he is, he's banking a slip, he doesn't have the money for the boat yet, but he's going to buy one in two years and he's, he is paying you the rent, you rented it to him, there's no requirement that you put a boat there, maybe he just wants to go to the dock and listen to the water. I mean, it's like, it's like renting a property, it's like, well, you're not using it. Well, okay, but I'm renting, I'm paying, yeah, we're all current, right? We're cool. Not my fault, I, you know, what do you care about?
I think the most prudent thing in those situations would be to, after a reasonable amount of time, it doesn't have to be written down, you call up and say, hey, we noticed you haven't had your boat's lift built for three months, everything okay, we're concerned, you know? Oh, I'm just feeling like keeping it, but I want to put a boat in, but I'm paying, okay, well, do you want to maybe give it up to somebody else or, you know, give them the option? But I don't think we should, if they're paying, then they get it, but if you want to reach out to them to make sure everything's okay and give them the option to give it up to somebody who could use it, but if they say, no, I want to keep it, well, then, okay.
And as far as repairs go, ever since the pandemic, supply is terrible on everything. You could be looking up to nine month, or even maybe a year before something comes available. So I do understand that, but what do you tell the citizens of Bel Air Beach that aren't in line and they see that thing empty for a year, nine months? That's, that's where I war with it because I know that there are slips there that people would jump on if they could have.
So here's an option. How long does our typical rental contract go for?
It, it's, it's automatic renewal once.
Okay, we'll make it automatic for renewal. So basically, if it's vacant, pick your time, if it's vacant for a year, we'll just give you a year. That takes care of, I understand it could take a, the city, maybe it's two years. The city reserves the right not to renew your lease at that point. We're giving you like two years. I mean, you're really not a bulder if you're waiting for a part for two years, I get it, but, you know, to, to the point, I mean, you, you see in a vacant slip and there's a limited number of them and you're really not using it, so stick a, you could stick a kayak in there and be fulfilling your obligation, but you're going to have to put some kind of vessel in there. Maybe the vessel you can't bring to the, to the beach, but stick something there. I don't care if you buy a rowboat, we saw one at the auction, you could have got it for like 400 bucks, but stick something in there.
It's probably being overly generous, I can see a year even.
Yeah, well, I, Dave's right, I mean, there is, you can get some.
I see more than I.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to penalize them because they're legitimately waiting for a part or they had to do an engine overhaul or whatever.
Well, that's where I think the, after, you know, three months or whatever, you reach out and see what the situation is and vote based on that because, and use discussions, I think if they're paying the bill, then they have the right to it. It did, the contract doesn't say pay your bills, maintenance and occupy the spot, which is.
That's what I'm saying, is you can amend, you know, as contracts come up, we can amend each one of them saying, we reserve the right.
But if you, if you were to be like, hey, what's going on?
Right.
What are your circumstances? And they give them the option, hey, since you haven't been using it for the last three months, we have somebody on the waitlist, if you don't want anymore, we'd be happy to, whatever, help with the transition to the next person.
Well, the provision written on this is, it's up to the customer to notify city hall that there's a problem. That, okay, I've gone past my number of days, whatever those are, since we don't have anything plugged in yet. And then they can actually just get, you know, an extension on that time. Of course, that's based upon, again, interpretation, but, hey, you've got a legitimate problem with your boat. They're boats, they break all the time. And the cruise, I'm not going to feel sorry for somebody that's on a three month cruise.
You get away to give you a year, so, I mean, how many people are going out for a year from Bel Air Beach this thing? If you, if you really are, then you call the city manager like, hey, I'm on a cruise for a year.
I actually do know somebody who did a year.
Maybe, I mean, you know.
All the way around the world on a sailboat.
We're not looking to, 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 but I mean, we can pick a number and put a year in here, it seems like we kind of like that number, but that gives you a year, there's nothing stopping, we don't have to put it in the ordinance that you call if you see it vacant, that's a, that's a management decision by the city. Lynn can call anytime and say what's going on and, you know, see if we put that.
I'd be interested in hearing what Lynn's recommendations would be.
Well, the cruise thing, I, since in most cases, I've seen one be gone for longer than 60 days and so I think having that for the cruise is not a big deal, putting something in there. If somebody doesn't, doesn't, let, let's say somebody comes and rents the slip, you know, if we have kind of a requirement or a policy that says you got to have a boat to be able to put it there. So, you know, our policy it states that. So realistically, if a person wanted to rent a slip, he's supposed to put a boat in there as soon as he rents the slip. That's, that's the current requirement. As far as repair and maintenance, it's a different animal right now. You, you've got to give them time to repair and maintain it. So I would say that should be, you know, I'll, I'll go with a year on that.
So if you want 365, you want 180, again, this says maybe, it doesn't say shall be, so you have some discretion, you have a lot of discretion here. And if a guy tells you, like Dave just said, hey, I'm waiting for the part, it's taken six months, it's going to take another two, you let him keep the thing and you see what happens. If the guy is nowhere to be found, never put a vessel in, never did a thing, like, you can take that one back and give it to somebody else.
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm saying about the first one. I think that needs to be a shorter period because if somebody doesn't put a boat in there, you know, if they say, I've got a boat and I'm going to put it in there and then they've paid the fee and rented it and then they don't put a boat in there, then they, they really bet us a line, to be honest with you.
And I do have a problem with what you said about you've got to have a boat on day one and I'm going to set up the scenario. You're looking for a boat, you know what size you want, but you don't have a place to keep it. There's nowhere around and you, basically the clock starts ticking the moment you find a slip, then you go find your boat. You can't pick a boat and then go find a slip, it doesn't work that way. So it's kind of backwards. And it, it's, unfortunately, it's phased that way for, the only people that can have a slip are people that already have boats. And for residents of Bel Air Beach, if you don't have property big enough to hold that boat, you'll never get a slip.
It's the same way with airplanes, you don't buy an airplane until you have a hangar and that's.
But if you were paying rent on a hangar, do you have to put an airplane in there? Or they just say, we'll take your money and, okay, you have a big hangar.
Most places, we're, I wait, it's just like there, you know, where's the plane stay? I wait five years.
So you don't get it unless you actually show them that you own an aircraft?
No, what I'm saying is the point, most people, you wouldn't buy a nice airplane until you have a place to keep it. It's the same way with the boat, you have to buy a boat if you don't have a place to keep it or pull it out of the water.
But could you rent the hangar without having a?
I think.
Could you rent the hangar without having the plane, like, without putting the plane in?
Yeah.
So you don't, you don't really?
My plane's down here right now and I'm paying rent up in North Carolina.
No, they don't.
They don't care as long as you pay.
See, that's, to this point is, you know, I mean, the problem is we have this big waiting list, so how can we be fair to the people that are, let me ask you this, how many people are actually doing this? I mean, are we solving a problem that we don't have right now? I'm starting to sound like you, Glenn, that was, that's a Glenn gun there, but really, is this a problem? I mean, do we have a lot of vacant slips that people are just abandoning?
Actually, you know, other than the one I told you about for the guy from England, for the most part, the people don't, don't abandon them. We don't have a problem renting slips at all.
I know we don't have a problem renting, but the question is, are people, the renters using them? Because if I'm, if I'm renting, to Glenn's point, if I'm renting a hangar and I'm putting my car in there, well, you know, meanwhile, there's a guy who has an airplane that really could use this, I can park my car in a parking lot and I'm really abusing the resource, if you will. He's not paying the rent, you know, but I'm not doing anything wrong, but I'm really taking it away from somebody who could use it. So what we're saying here is, you know, if I, if I get on the list and, hey, it's my turn, oh, great, I'll, when are you going to get your boat? In five years? Well, you know, when do you come back in five years because we got a guy who wants to use it right now? I mean, that's all this is, it's about fairness, so.
Yeah, and really, what I'm saying is, we should, we should make them at least a timeframe for them to put a boat in there.
What's, what's your recommendation? Even though we don't really have a major problem? 180 days?
Yeah.
Okay, but six months? Dave, can we get a boat in six months? Any boat will do, right? I can stick a.
Walk into that one.
I figured they'll put a lift in there too.
I mean, if I put a boat there, I put a boat there, right? As long as it's seaworthy, we're good, not the one that had the plant growing out of if I Robin's house, the tree.
We're not sure if that's seaworthy.
We don't know.
I don't want to hard down.
All right, 180 days, we all cool with that? This thing can go forward for a vote next, next time? Any other changes, Dave? Citizens, anything? Nope? Dave, anything left?
Three, all right, so three blanks.
Yep.
The first one was, was everybody's.
180, right?
180.
Right, and then 60 on the cruise.
Right.
60 on the cruise.
Last one for the repairs.
180.
180.
You know, what makes the cruise 90? That covers every eventuality. You're going to go a long ways and that's, that's three months at city. And they, all they have to do is call you and let you know they're going to go for four months and you're not going to unreasonably withhold it, I mean.
And hopefully you call and try to contact them before you just give away.
Right.
Well, in most cases, people will put, like, like the guy in England, they've got a lift there, so the city's not in the lift business. We want them to remove it.
So how do we address the, I don't have a boat yet problem because it's not in this?
180 days. Give you six months to get one. That's fair. Maybe I've been holding off until I got my waiting list, I got my waiting list. I give you six months to buy one, that's a lot of time.
I don't like it.
Okay, we'll all vote for it. Okay, anything else, Lynn?
No.
We're good? All right, that one's done. We got three minutes, we're done.
I have, I have one thing, not, that's in the agenda. November 11th is a Thursday and that's holiday for the staff. And I would like to ask the council to give the staff the 12th off because, because a lot of cities right now are, are giving staff that through the pandemic, they're giving them money, they're giving them days off, cities and counties. analysis got a proposal to give every staff member that got vaccinated $750. Those boroughs doing it. Some, some of the beach communities are actually giving people money and days off. So we're a small city, it's coming back to work for one day, so I'm asking the council to close the off of 11th and 12th.
Thanks for the holiday.
Just one time, it's not really an extra holiday. It, it's a, it's a gift to the employees as opposed to what some other cities are doing, you know, they're given five, or counting 500 or 750 plus days of vacation.
Turn that as a resolution at the next meeting and we'll vote on it and pitch it. It'll probably pass, I don't think we can pass it tonight because we're giving it a holiday, I mean, that is, we have, we have to hear from the citizens on this because we're, we're really giving an extra holiday. They used to do this in New Jersey all the time and it used to, I never had a problem with it, it was the day after Thanksgiving, yet a lot of people were like, they get X amount of state holidays already and now we're giving another one and it became a big political issue for the people. So I think you bring it up to a vote and we see where it goes and we hear from the citizens and if there's no objection, it should likely pass, they just won't be able to make their plans for the long.
Well, I'm just asking what the council's feedback is on it.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm totally not a problem, but, yeah, I think it'll pass.
Okay.
It should, but if we get 30 people.
I'm just saying.
They might change our mind.
What they're hearing from other cities, I've just said, hey, I'm asking the city council to give us something as a token, you know, we only got six employees.
Yes, not that many. You'll pitch it and I'm sure it'll go over.
Okay.
But again, I mean, if we have a room full of people screaming, then.
And the, the one last thing I have is, I'd like to use the citizens advisory committee to discuss and review the underground project on Gulf Boulevard and the American Rescue Fund funding so they could maybe make some recommendations to council and if there's